All right, it's five o'clock and it looks like we have all of the commissioners present here. So why don't we go ahead and call today's September 22nd Albany Planning and Zoning Commission, special and regular meetings to order. With that, staff, can we please have roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Donaldson.
I'm here.
Commissioner McLeod.
Here.
Commissioner Moeman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pilch.
Here.
And Chair Wadi.
Here, thank you. Item three on our agenda, experte communications. Do any commissioners have any experte communications to disclose for either the special hearing at five or for the regular hearing that starts at seven?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we will close that item and move on to item four on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted on by one motion. Approval of the consent calendar means that the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. And there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the public or a commissioner wishes to pull these items off the consent calendar.
Um.
Like to staff, yeah, you had a clarification?
Clarification, so, so the consent calendar is scheduled for the seven o'clock meeting. The five o'clock meeting is the San Pablo Avenue specific plan study.
Got it, I see, okay. My fault on that, so we will, we will jump back to that later, but we will go ahead and just, for some reason, sorry, I'm having a little, there we go, okay. My agenda was a little confused here. Perfect, then that just takes us to item, our one and only item on the special calendar, which is the San Pablo Avenue specific plan. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to staff and our consultant for presentation.
With that, I'm just going to turn it directly over to Jeannie Iceberg with Lexington Planning.
Okay, thank you, Anne, and thank you Chair Wadi and members of the commission. Glad to be back tonight talking about the San Pablo Avenue specific plan. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so we're back tonight talking about land use and the revised framework. You'll recall, we met in June about land use and July about urban design. But based on your feedback, we staff and consultants have prepared some revisions to the proposed policies in the framework and presented some things that you see that are the same. In the interest of time, I know we have two hours and we have a few different items to go through on the staff presentation side and some feedback from our developer feasibility analysis. I'm gonna try to keep this short and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them during the Q and A. So I'm gonna recap the project and present some of those new elements that are in the staff report. We have Mark Rhodes here with us tonight, which is very exciting. I know there was some interest in having some understanding about feasibility from the developer standpoint and I'll introduce him at the end of my presentation. And we'll go straight into his presentation. And then we will have time for commissioner questions for consultants and for city staff and for Mark. And then we will go into public comment. And then staff will take over a straw poll. And so we're looking for commissioner feedback on specific development standards and direction of the plan to really gauge where we're going in terms of the ultimate public review draft plan. And so that straw poll and discussion will be the last items on our agenda. And I know we're trying to wrap up by seven o'clock when your regular meeting starts. So just recapping the project, again, the emphasis of this plan is on housing. And this emanates from the vision in the general plan to really transform the San Pablo Avenue corridor from a more audio auto-oriented corridor to a mixed-use, higher-density, more attractive pedestrian-oriented corridor. And so to make those updates, amendments to the zoning ordinance will be required, amendments to the general plan will be required, and design guidelines and design standards to help facilitate that vision. And so we've talked about this slide in the past, but this really just illustrates a development along the corridor from Emeryville through up to El Cerrito. We see much higher heights allowed, much higher densities allowed in our neighboring cities. And as a result, we've seen much larger developments, more development along those parts of the corridor, especially in recent years. Other context for this project is the housing element, which is proceeding underway this year and next year. And the current housing element cycle, as you know, only called for 335 units, according to the state regional housing needs assessment. But the next iteration of that rena cycle, the city has a number three times that. And so thinking about where those units go, at present, most of those units are expected to be accommodated in the San Pablo Avenue corridor. Just recapping where we've been, so we've been meeting with the commission and through community events over the last year. And most recently, as I mentioned, this summer, we met with the Commission on Land Use and Urban Design. And then we'll be back next month in October to talk about infrastructure analysis and the traffic analysis. And then this will culminate in preparation of a draft plan, which we expect to draft this fall and look for hearings for adoption this winter. So I mentioned, you know, we had this meeting in June with the commission and we got feedback, both areas consensus and areas of disagreement. So there was a sense that we should be modifying the base standards rather than use this local density bonus program as a tool for potential incentives for increasing heightened density. And so you'll see that as the major change in the framework we're presenting tonight. So now we're proposing to update those upzone, update those existing standards to increase heights and densities rather than a more incentive-based strategy. Second, there was a clear preference to continue to require ground floor commercial uses along the entire corridor. And so we've narrowed the exceptions there. Regardless, you'll see that we still have, when we think about urban design, there will be requirements for ground floor active uses regardless of the type of use, even if it's just a residential lobby or common area residential. Lastly, there was generally support for the proposed heights, for height transitions, for the densities, the open space and the bike parking standards. On the, on the areas of disagreement, there were some commissioners who wanted to see higher density using the R3 district. Some who wanted to see, and we've seen this in the public comment as well, comments that we should be seeing higher density housing spread throughout the city, not just on this corridor. And this, that part of the process, well, you know, it's less of our charge as part of this specific plan, but may be part of the housing element update. Third, there was interest in additional economic analysis of feasibility, although this plan is not scoped to do an economic analysis. I mentioned we do have Mark Rhodes here tonight to give us some feedback from a developer who is working up and down the corridor in other cities. And then lastly, there were mixed opinions about parking standards. Some folks who wanted to propose reducing or even eliminating parking standards and others who thought the parking standards were too too limiting particularly around unbundled parking and potential for spillover. So based on that feedback, staff and consultants went back and revised the framework. So I mentioned, the big move is that we're proposing a sort of more traditional strategy of just revising the base districts. And so this would increase heights and densities, increasing heights from 38 feet to 68 feet along most of the corridor, 85 feet on the northern node closest to the El Cerrito Bart Station at Plaza to 85 feet, eight stories. Increasing the floor of residential density and eliminating the maximum residential density. And again, we've talked about this in the past, but just that residential density is not a very reliable indicator of, as a ratio, because it relies so much on the bedroom count. And then lastly, increasing the floor area ratio from 2.25 to 3.5 to allow more of that mass within the height. And we included some of the old, excuse me, some of the old site tests in the staff report. And those do show that some higher FARs may be warranted. We're trying to allow for some modulation in the buildings. We don't have two blocky buildings. And so I know that when we, when we hear from Mark Rhodes, this is a comment that you'll hear is that potentially we could go up higher in terms of FAR. So just illustrating what that looks like, the proposal to go from 38 feet to 68 feet, 85 feet north of Clay and Brighton, and then keeping the R3 existing height where it is with the exception of lots that go all the way through to Canes or through Adams. So as an incentive for a lot consolidation or an incentive for property owners who already own lots that go through the whole block, to allow that back half of the block, the R3 zoning, to go up to 50 feet. So that could allow for more development across the entire site and a more efficient development pattern. So ground floor commercial requirements, again, the way it is today, ground floor commercials required throughout the entire corridor. That would continue to be the case under this proposal, so required in the three nodes, required on all other sites with some exceptions. First, housing element sites that are outside of the node, projects with 100% below market rate units as a way to not make sure that we're not adding cost onto those affordable housing projects. And then third, to provide this option, if a site's outside of the node and they come to the commission and request a conditional use permit with a series of findings around those active uses, and then that could also be a possibility to have a ground floor that was residential. But so generally narrowing the exceptions. The last piece that's new is this community benefits package. So previously, we'd proposed to this local density bonus program, it was both a way to capture the value of upzoning and to ensure that the city and the community are receiving certain benefits from that upzoning. In that way, we had, we had proposed a voluntary increase in the below-market rate requirement from 15% to 20%. Right now, the requirement is 15%. Under state law, in order to go to 20%, and as a requirement, we would need to demonstrate that that's feasible, show that report to the state under state law. So until such time as the city did that report or was interested in doing that, whether for this plan or on a citywide basis, for now, it still needs to be voluntary. And so we've come up with a series of benefits. These are suggestions, you may have more, but to voluntarily request benefits from a project if they exceed certain standards. So the first level is if a project exceeds existing standards. They would need to either provide more below-market rate units or provide some other amenity. And we split up into list A, which are big ticket items, and list B, which are smaller ticket items. So the idea is if you're one of these projects, let's say 50, 60 feet in height, you would either provide that BMR housing additional or you would provide a big ticket item or two of these list E, smaller ticket items. Now, the second level is if a project's exceeding that 68-foot height. So if we see an 85-foot project in that northern node, then, then we're really offering an incentive, something new. And so in the same vein of that local density bonus ordinance, would require that additional amount of BMR housing, so it's 20% as well as one of these amenities. The amenities suggested here include publicly accessible open space, a larger format ground floor tenant space, a mid-block pedestrian connection to reduce that walking distance on these, on these really big blocks, or a development of a bike ped or transit facility. Could be a bus shelter, could be a crosswalk that's identified in the active transportation plan. And then on the smaller list, we'll be looking for two amenities. We've got onsite public art rather than the fee-in lieu, family-friendly housing, meaning a percentage that's three-plus units, all electric construction, a certain amount of PV or solar, or EV-ready charging in a parking garage. So just illustrating what this looks like, so right now, we've got the existing zoning, the proposed again at 68 feet or up to 85 feet, the required step back, which we presented during our last meeting to replace the daylight plane, and this requirement for community benefits. There is a section of the staff report that explores what this proposal would mean in terms of state density bonus law. And what could happen is even though our height limit is 68 feet proposed here, if an applicant proposed under state density bonus law, they could get a story or two higher. So we could see a development application at seven or eight feet. And of course, they can request waivers and concessions. And those could be for things like the step back or for a concession to not do the ground floor retail, things like that, that are protected under state law. So components that haven't changed, still proposing to rezone this block along between Washington and Solano, that we talked about last time and got good feedback on. We have not proposed changes to the parking requirements or the incentives to seek reduced parking requirements. So the one-to-one parking requirement would remain, but you could reduce that by providing transit passes, by providing bike parking. And the height transitions, I mentioned the step back that was proposed in June that we're still showing here, this is the example from the rear yard budding condition. And then lastly, the development potential that we presented last time in terms of the overall build-out of units and commercial square footage has not changed based on the revisions. We received a number of comment letters over the last few days with a real mix of comments. There was concerns that parking standards were too low in general, should be higher, concerns about spillover from required unbundling, and then some comments that we should eliminate parking standards. So a little bit all over the map on parking. Concerns about height transitions, the loss of the daylight plane between those higher and lower density districts. And then concerns, as I mentioned earlier, about focusing new housing on San Pablo Avenue rather than spreading it across the city, thinking about the housing element. And then lastly, there was a lot of support for higher density and taller heights, but mixed opinions on some of those specific standards. Oops. So moving in with your permission, Chair, I would just like to go right into Mark's remarks. I have his presentation as well. And so I wanted to introduce Mark Rhodes. He is a planner, a developer. He was the planning manager for the City of Berkeley for I think nine years and currently works as a, and while I'm talking, actually, maybe we can, Anne, or if we can promote Mark Rhodes from the attendee list, we'll get him up on the screen. But Mark is, works with applicants and develops his own projects and has worked on projects on San Pablo Avenue in Emeryville, in Berkeley and in El Cerrito. And so we had him take a look at the plan and provide some feedback on the feasibility based on the standards and the proposals that we have here.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Yes, thank you, and go ahead, Mr. Rhodes, let's just go straight into your presentation.
Thank you so much. And good evening, everybody. It's just quite a pleasure for me and I'll just open this by saying I'm not being paid. So all of this is just straight, straight from my, my happy zoning place. Thanks, Jeannie, for the bona fides, I'll add a couple. I'm now about 31 years as city planner and the last 10, 12 years also as developer. As Jeannie said, we work on a lot of development projects, almost all of them transit-oriented, sustainable infill housing work. For almost 10 years, I was city planning manager in the City of Berkeley from 97 till 2007. And actually, in our very early 2000s, I hosted the Albany Planning Commission to look at some rooftop open spaces in downtown Berkeley. So that was fun. I've lived in Berkeley since 1992 and I've lived next to San Pablo Avenue. I lived between Gilman and Cedar, half a block off of San Pablo Avenue, for the last 24 years. San Pablo Avenue is my favorite street in the entire East Bay, has been for a long time for, for lots of interesting reasons. And I was also an Albany resident for two years, from about 93 to 95, I lived on Portland Avenue. So I've seen the avenue from a lot of different perspectives, as Jeannie said. In the last 10 or so years, I've, I was, I've been elected to the California Planning Roundtable, where I work more or less at state level on legislation and other types of initiatives with the State Chapter of the American Planning Association and the Governor's Office. I'm a member of Lambda Alpha, which is an honorary land economics society and then American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been around the block a couple of times with zoning. And when Jeannie asked me to sit down with her and then when we sat down with staff, it was kind of exciting and as this unfolded, I was really happy to see the work and the progress that Albany is taking, the initiative on here. It's very, very impressive. So let's, let's sort of dive in to some of the issues that are going to affect development on San Pablo Avenue and Albany and everywhere, actually. And, and, and this slide is really important because costs versus revenues. You know, the, the cost side of this, much as the revenue side, is this little bit of magic, right? Developers all have their own kinds of pro formas, but the, the one thing that's in common for all developers is the fact, is, is the difficulty with real estate development is how quickly your underwriting factors can change. Two of those are listed here. You see, everybody, most people know what happened to the price of lumber earlier this year, almost killed one of the projects that we had underway in that moment. And then the cost per square foot for construction in the last two years has gone up $100 a square foot or more, depending on where you are. That is a 35% increase over three, four years ago. That's a huge number. And so trying to, trying to make a pro forma work so that you can actually finance a project relies on a lot of things that are changing, interest rates, entitlement timing, the availability of capital, whether it's a bank loan, whether it's government financing like tax credits, et cetera. Labor has been a big one, labor shortages, which is part of what's driving up construction costs and materials cost, all of those things change. So when we're looking at a development project, the other side of the coin, of course, is, well, how much are the rents or the sales prices going to be? And those factors have to line up in order for a project to get its financing. Jeannie has done some really good homework on the rents and the sales prices. And what you see here is, is exactly what I would expect to see. The fact that Albany doesn't have much in the way of new residential to compare to isn't that important because we can sort of do some extrapolating between Berkeley and El Cerrito, which is sort of where Albany generally falls between anyways. As we go further away from San Francisco or the University of California, we see rent and sales prices start to fall off. And so I think that, you know, the difficulty here is going to be trying to get at $450 a square foot, we really have to be north of $4 a square foot in rent to make that work. And I think that El Cerrito is starting to approach that. That's where Berkeley is and where Berkeley is, where we think the rents are so high, we're still dealing in the margins from a development perspective. Projects are very difficult to put together even still. And so my expectation for Albany is that the rental pricing might be closer to El Cerrito than Berkeley, but the reason why El Cerrito gets a little bit of a boost is it's two Bart stations. And so the north part of San Pablo Avenue in Albany will do better probably than the southern part because it's closer to the El Cerrito Plaza Bart Station. But then again, you know, you've got your 52 line that takes you from University Village up into Berkeley, up into the UC and downtown. You've got your, the 72 that takes you all along the corridor, so there's good transit access. But what I would expect to see in some of the apartments further south in Albany will be folks generally between 25 and 35 years old, looking for roommates or young couples in the early parts of their career, but working. In the northern part, you might actually see more students because of the short walk, relatively short walk to the Bart Station. The condo pricing is going to be different than that because Albany is this lovely sort of single-family home community that has always historically had home sales pricing between Berkeley and El Cerrito. You know, El Cerrito's closer to Richmond, which is bringing pricing down a little bit, but it's just partly because you're getting away from the Bay Central Point. And so I'm gonna expect, you guys have that new project that's finishing up right now over there behind the old Sizzler. I'm gonna expect to see that pricing north of the El Cerrito pricing and probably closer to Berkeley's pricing on a square foot basis. So I think that's something to think about. But I did also want to just really let folks know that with labor costs, construction costs and materials, it's very difficult to build right now. So right now, we are under construction with a five-story project on University Avenue that was priced before the prices jumped too high. And we are building that at $375 a square foot. It's extremely difficult to build that project properly. But we're also building some small townhouse condominiums, sort of central west Berkeley, that I think are going to approach that, that, that number there that you see for Berkeley in a square foot cost. Again, it's difficult right now to build these projects. Jeannie, let's go on to the next slide. By the way, the lumber pricing is, is restabilizing and starting to come back down just a little bit. Sorry, my office is downtown. Okay. But, you know, again, I want to congratulate you guys. This plan is absolutely heading in the right direction. It's really good to see. And I know that Albany has struggled over the last 15, 20 years with sort of rightsizing San Pablo Avenue. So now you've got the El Cerrito specific plan and you've got what Berkeley-San Pablo Avenue work does. And I think this is going to dovetail very, very nicely on both sides of that equation. Seven to eight stories is always going to be more feasible than five to six because you're getting more yield out of the numbers and there's economies of scale in your construction pricing. Five to six stories is, is getting more and more difficult to do because with a concrete podium, four or five floors above it, it's just very, very difficult to pay for. And with the way the international building code has changed, you can build an eight-story building now with a three-story concrete or block podium and five stories of type three construction, which is fire-resistant wood or metal frame. It's a lot less than full type one construction and we see a lot of projects trying to push to that seven and eight stories to bring their, their, their cost per square foot down somewhat. But, you know, either way, it's, it's, it's not easy. And I'm suggesting to Jeannie, and it might have been with staff on the phone yesterday too, that one of the better alternatives here might be somebody who's going to build a five-story project and use all wood because there is engineered wood product now that will allow a five-story building to be built. That might be the most economically feasible product for Albany, given the rents that we're likely to see. I think on the, on stories and height, we get into these, we've gotten into these fights in Berkeley over the years about stories, but really, you know, we're talking about a building envelope. And yes, there's an intensive intensity of occupancy associated with more stories versus few. But from a policy perspective right now, we're really trying to load up our transit corridors with as much density as possible. You know, I've lived in apartments that had seven-foot, five-inch ceilings and I've lived in apartments with nine-foot ceilings. I can't tell you that the nine-foot ceiling apartment was that much of a greater, beautiful, fantastic experience because in a place like the East Bay right now where housing is so badly needed, we just need roofs over people's heads. So if somebody wants to build that seven and a half feet and get another story out of it versus a nine-foot and fewer stories, I think that, that that's something that, that is better left potentially to the developer to try to figure out as long as you're regulating the height. And if we're talking about five to seven stories, an FAR 3.5 is just too low. We had to raise the FAR in the Telegraph area of Berkeley because we had, I think, a seven-story height limit, but a three or four FAR and it was just far too low. We raised it to, I want to say five or six, it's at least five. And I think for six or seven stories, given the lock coverages and setbacks that you're allowing, that you should look at that 5.0 FAR because that's going to get you the buildings that we're looking at. Actually, it might be a little bit less than the buildings that we're looking at in this picture right here. And this is, the lower project is one of our entitlements on San Pablo Avenue and we're having difficulty financing it right now. We may have to re-entitle it and try to put another story on it. And then, and that's a 10,000 square foot parcel. And then the project above it is also an approximately 10,000 square foot parcel. But these are sort of the bread and butter. This, this typology of development is sort of the bread and butter of corridor development. And so whatever we can do to make them work better financially is going to be in the city's interest. I think, you know, I was really thrilled to see the bike parking that you're thinking about. I think, you know, Berkeley just changed theirs and they didn't go far enough as far as I'm concerned. We've been regularly as developers and consultants to developers, our projects in everywhere, generally speaking, we always propose one secure bike parking space per unit. It's, it's just kind of the right way to go. And folks can do it, we can. And folks can do it. We can find places for it. You can hang hooks in apartments. You can have bike rooms. There's lots of places to put bicycles and having the long tails is really important, some percentage, because there will be young families that will live in these units and that's really excellent transportation. We see them all over the place now. Looking at your, your vehicle parking requirement, you know, some folks would say, gosh, one-to-one, that seems antiquated and old. But yours is higher than that right now. And I, I think that one-to-one is a reasonable place to go in this day and age. Because as I was talking to Genie more about it, you know, transit access, you're not right next to BART stations. Okay, you've got good bus transit. But then in talking it through with Genie, I realized that they're pretty fairly low hanging fruit in order to reduce that on a ministerial basis. So with the options that are available to reduce the parking even further, I think that, that that number works. And look, in a few years, if you get a small handful of these projects actually built, let's say five to 10 years, that's what it would be at least. We can talk about that if you guys want, how long it takes. But you know, you can revisit that. And Berkeley did a parking survey recently, looking at multifamily units to see what the parking usage was. And it was actually quite a bit lower than what anybody realized. And that kind of spurred them to eliminate parking requirements for residential uses, period, citywide back in May. Not suggesting Albany do that. It's a different community. But I do think that you're sort of rightsizing that parking standard right now with the available reductions should be, that should work very well. Let's see. Yeah, let's go, Genie, to the, to the next one. More on, on standards here. Step backs are really, really expensive. So the lower image on this slide is the project we have under construction and on University Avenue right now, right between Sacramento and MLK in Berkeley. This project was subject to a daylight plane that was built into the University Avenue zoning quite a few years ago. The zoning was changed to do this in two thousand and seven. I was still the planning manager. I told the planning commission and the city council, it would likely be 10 years before we saw new construction on University Avenue because of the chilling effect that this daylight plane would have. Well, this is the first building on that side of University Avenue fourteen years later, and we barely made this building work. Those step backs require significant additional framing and underpinning. The waterproofing is extremely expensive. The decking is expensive. And what do we get for it? I mean, and that to me is the most important policy question almost that's here. What are we trading for that massing? We're trading daylight, some amount of daylight, not a lot, but some amount anyways, to adjacent, lower-density residential uses, which is good. But it comes at a cost. And what's the cost? The cost is sustainable transit-oriented units that would have gone into that void space. And we still could have had some setback from the residences behind us. But with that daylight plane, we carved out probably twenty-five percent of the apartment yield that could have otherwise gone there and still left some setback from the neighbors to the north. So, you know, be careful. My recommendation is to, if, if you really need to have that ten-foot rear yard setback, you want that to be able to qualify as usable open space. So it doesn't become a dead cat zone. Because that's what will happen. So, you know, at least for the San Pablo area, you might think about reducing your open space dimensional requirement to ten feet instead of fifteen, but really think hard about that daylight plane. And then step back at the top of the podium and then let the box go up on top of that. That is going to save a lot of money. It's going to make projects more feasible. And instead of three projects over the next five to seven years, you might see six or seven. It can make that much of a difference. And the other thing to really think about in this construct here is the fact that, you know, the setback is one thing. But there's also more building separation that's occurring on those residential parcels. So I like to, when we're putting a project design together and looking at the context, I really like to look at where the living spaces are on the adjacent parcels. And, you know, while the building in or out, depending on where those living spaces are, because to me, what's more important than a setback is what's the building separation? You know, if you've got a five-foot separation between a six-story building and a two-story, single-family residence, that's no good. But if you've actually got a thirty-five-foot airspace in between them, that's a whole different story. And will change, as I said, the feasibility construct. On open space, I know you guys are coming down. Hundred square feet is still a pretty big number. And when I'm looking at a development project, I'm trying to figure out what's the control point going to be in the zoning for my yield? Is it going to be the parking requirement? Is it going to be the open space requirement? Is it the height? Is it the density? In this case, it might become the open space at a hundred square feet per unit. A density bonus project will allow someone to waive some of that. But as a standard, really think about that. You know, San Pablo Avenue zoning in Berkeley goes down to forty square feet per unit. I'm not suggesting you go that far down. Maybe seventy-five square feet per unit, maybe fifty square feet per unit. Because the important point here is that people aren't recreating in the open spaces on the rooftops and in these projects, even if they were at ground level. They're smaller spaces. They're made for sitting. They're made for congregating. They're made for doing small activities. People are going to the parks for their recreation. So we don't need big expanses as open spaces to make these projects work and to make them feel comfortable for the residents that are there. Next slide. The benefits package is a really, really good idea. But I want to sort of gut check everyone here. Genie told me that the average lot size along the avenue, with a, with a handful of exceptions, of course, is about five thousand square feet, fifty-five hundred square feet, somewhere in there. So this is where I start looking at numbers like this and trying to decide, okay, what's it going to do to me? So, you know, these first three, three things aren't going to be feasible for your average lot size. If someone with a five thousand square foot lot, you know, do you really want fifteen hundred square feet of, of public open space at the front of every five thousand square foot parcel that might develop along the avenue? I think that's way too much. For any individual project that might go on a five thousand square foot parcel, you might want three hundred square feet out front. That will be a nice little compact plaza area that can be furnished and that people can use. Fifteen hundred square feet is just too big. Even 10% of lot area, I think, is a little bit too big. So you want to control on that and try to understand, well, how is that going to get used? It's only going to get used infrequently on much larger parcels potentially. Same thing with the ten thousand square feet of retail space, right? On a five thousand square foot parcel, I got to build two stories of retail before I can start building my residential. It won't work. And so I think that even in your Albany Bowl proposal that's in front of the city right now, the, the proposed retail space is substantially less than ten thousand square feet. And if a project that big can't make ten thousand square feet of retail space work, and I know they're operating under a different zoning construct. But if they're not proposing it, who is going to propose it? And so think about that as well. And I know, you know, there's been some conversation about node concepts and, and from an economic development perspective, Albany doesn't really want to go there. But, you know, San Pablo Avenue is a long auto-oriented retail strip. And, you know, in this day and age, it's very, very difficult to have successful retail or commercial along the entire strip. So that's another thing to think about. And then finally, on the mid-block connections, superb idea. This is something that you see in the El Cerrito, San Pablo Avenue Specific Plan Design Guidelines Documentation. But again, you know, with, if you've got a five thousand square foot lot that's a hundred feet deep and you're going to, and, and I have to think about putting an eight or a 10-foot wide connection through there. You just took 20% of the parcel. And that just killed the yield and killed the deal. But the other ones down here, so, and then lastly, you know, when we're talking about fees or, or public improvements, developers just love to write you a check. They want to write you a check and be done, in particular, when you're dealing with Caltrans and San Pablo Avenue. And in fact, that might make more sense for the, from the city's perspective, trying to pull the money and do sections of things at a time as opposed to individual or one-off. But, you know, where there's a crosswalk or a bus station, a bus shelter requirement, things of that nature, those are, those are absolutely things that should be done on that individual in-the-moment basis. And that, so that's a good place for some of these benefits. But the other things down here, you know, you would hear a lot of developers hem and haw about all of that. Oh, my gosh, it's expensive and this and that. These items to me, as a planner-developer, are more or less lower-hanging fruit these days. That building that we're building on University Avenue in Berkeley is Berkeley's first all-electric commercial building of scale. And it was not easy trying to figure out how to make it all work, but we did. And we're going to save a little tiny, tiny, tiny bit of money by not bringing in the gas piping. But with our solar array, we're going to power more than 50% of our entire building with that all-electric system. And so that works really well. On-site public art. Do you want to, do, do you not, would you rather have the money go into a fund for art education or the Arts Commission to commission their, their own artwork in different places? You know, Berkeley took the stance that they'd rather have the money. So they require a 2% of, of cost piece of art, or if you want to pay the in-lug fee, you pay point zero eight percent of cost. So they, they made a clear distinction and most projects in Berkeley are paying into the fund and the Arts Commission is using it for education and public art. Solar hot water and PV, you, you just have to now. State law requires residential projects to be solar-ready. I think this is low-hanging fruit for folks who want to get the benefits and spend a little bit of money because especially if you're doing all-electric, the solar PV could work well. Generally, solar hot water is more efficient. But if you've got an all-electric system, you're going to go PV with it. And then finally, you know, this, 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 the EV charging. Let's remember that the governor just signed into law the fact that by 2030, we won't be selling cars with combustion engines in California. So electric vehicles are here. They've been here. They're becoming more and more ubiquitous, especially in the East Bay. Almost can't, you know, walk six blocks in Berkeley without stepping on about 20 of them. And I think that it's high time for us to, if somebody wants the benefit, they make all of their parking spaces EV-ready. And they make somewhere between 10 and 30% of them, they wire them for EV now. And I don't think that that's too much to ask. So those items on the bottom, picking a couple of those to get the benefits. People can do that. A lot of developers, like I said, will kvetch about it. But these are all things that we have done and are doing in projects, either that we're working on or projects that we're building right now. So I think that's mostly all I have. Happy to try to answer any questions you, you all might have. But I, you know, thanks, Genie, for bringing me into this and, and staff, Ann and Jeff, for the conversation yesterday. And, and good luck, you guys. This is great work.
Thank you, Mark and Chair. Before we move on, I just wanted to, I did want to disclose that Mark and I do work together on projects. And so that's part of the reason that Ann and Jeff maybe proposed it, that we do know each other and do work together. So I just wanted to put that out there. But obviously he gave you a lot of honest feedback. So. All right. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions. We do want to, Mark is joining us as a volunteer. So if we can direct questions to him first and then we may let him go and then happy to answer anything else.
Well, that's very generous.
Great. And, and thank you, Genie and, and Mark for the presentation. So the commissioners will go ahead and open it up right now for questions that we have with Mr. Rhodes or for Genie or for staff. And then once we go through questions, we'll go ahead, turn it over to public comment and then we'll turn it back for commission thoughts, commentary, suggestions, and we'll go from there. So with that, Commissioner Pulp, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah. So I'll start off with just a couple of questions. I understand we want to get the questions out of the way. So two questions for Mr. Rhodes. Thank you for being here. Do, you talked about parcel size being small in Albany, some mostly small in Albany. But don't real estate people and developers get together and broker parcel consolidations in order to get projects done? Does that not happen? And second question, how do we compare to El Cerrito's specific plan at this point?
Oh, wow, those are good questions. Let me answer the El Cerrito one first. El Cerrito's plan is a massive plan. And El Cerrito has a whole lot of different sort of looks and feel to its different stretches of San Pablo Avenue than Albany does. They've got two BART stations, one at the north end and one at the south end. And then in the middle, there's a whole lot of soft stuff going on that isn't as transit accessible. In addition, that plan was done lockstep with City of Richmond, which had its issues. So that plan was extraordinarily comprehensive. The design details in their guidelines are extraordinarily comprehensive. It's a good plan and I have held that plan up statewide as a good example of objective standards, even though it's complex. But if you pay attention to its complexities, you can get through the process in El Cerrito very, very quickly. We've had large projects go through in one meeting as a result of the prescriptions in their specific plan. So I think that your plan is right-sized for Albany. And, and El Cerrito's plan is right-sized for a stretch of San Pablo Avenue with a whole bunch of different look and feel to it. So, and, and I will be honest, I have not, you know, sort of looked at them side by side to say, well, you know, maybe you could do some of this or maybe less of that. So that's just my, my feedback after spending time with Ann, Jeff and, and Genie. And then your first question again was, oh, parcel consolidation. So I, I, so, you know, let's dispel a big rumor out there that always happens in a, in a case where you're upzoning. Oh, my gosh, there's going to be a thousand applications tomorrow. The city's going to change in the next three years completely. It's just not going to happen. I think that Albany, and I'm just using the Berkeley example, you're going to be lucky to get a half a dozen projects proposed in the next few years. And when you look at a very high-rent place like Berkeley, that's so housing constrained, mostly because of university, of the university, that is the case. You know, we've, over the last 20 years, Berkeley has only seen maybe a dozen new projects get proposed and six or seven of them actually built. And so they, the consolidation is difficult. The parcels have to be available. And so it doesn't really happen very often. We haven't seen it in Berkeley happen hardly at all. In a place like El Cerrito, it happens more because you've got all those vacant former auto sales parcels that people are consolidating. But that's a special, very specific case. I, I don't see it happening so much in Albany because the problem is, is you've got folks that have owned these parcels for decades. They've been in the families. They've got a little bit of trickle income that works for them. And they're not going to take the risk of doing a development project or selling their big family asset.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Donaldson. Hi, Doug.
Commissioner, you're unmuted. Commissioner Donaldson, you're on, oh, there you go.
Now, and I got, I was muted. I'm sorry. Hello, Mark, and thank you very much.
Doug, it's nice to see you.
Yeah, good. I appreciate, appreciate the, the presentation very much. It's very good. My question for you is, have you had experience with the state density bonus program and how's that gone? And, and how do you see that working in Albany? Or how do you see it working under what you've seen with the draft plan we have so far?
I think it will work. I think that, you know, when I became planning manager in Berkeley, we were on the cusp of starting to use state density bonus law more regularly. And I pushed it because by getting that extra story or two, in some cases, out of a project, it made the project actually financially feasible where they hadn't been before. So we are expert at state density bonus law. We use it in probably most of the residential projects that we're working on. I think that it works fairly well for the development community. And I think it's a way for communities to get more housing and more site-built affordable housing. So when you're looking at your affordable housing, you know, I want to recommend that you, you have an in-lug fee. But, you know, also make sure that you're not creating a standard that's going to chill your development projects. And 20% might be a little bit high. That's what Berkeley's number is. And of course, this is, you know, some of the highest rents in the Bay Area. So, you know, really think about that. But, but density bonus, you know, it, it, it not only does it provide a little bit of extra yield for meeting your inclusionary requirement anyways, but it also protects the projects a little bit with the waivers and modifications and the Housing Accountability Act all working together. but it also protects the projects a little bit with the waivers and modifications and the Housing Accountability Act all working together. Then, you know, projects have to get through cities in a certain timeframe now and they can only be fussed around with so much. So, you know, I know that that's had a bit of a chilling effect on neighborhood participation, but quite frankly, after 40 years of neighborhood, of super-strong neighborhood participation and process, we now have a terrible housing crisis in the state of California. So we had to change the playing field. So state density bonus law works.
Hey, Commissioner Moment.
I have some questions to Jeannie, actually. Are we supposed to ask questions to Mark first and then have a turn to Jeannie or we can go ahead?
You can go ahead, Commissioner Moment.
Okay, yeah, so I have a couple of clarifying questions. This is regarding some of the policies. The main, I think, important one is the height increase from 38 to 68. Table one and then policy LU3-1 and LU4. They talk about the height increase and then also the community benefits. I'm not clear from what it is written on LU4. It says that, let me go to LU4 first. So LU4-1, it said projects that exceed 38 feet in height but not 68 feet and, and/or exceed 2.25 yard are requiring, you know, and then the list of the community benefits. So my question is, this increase of height from 38 to 68 is without any community benefits as a base condition? Or 38 feet would stay as a base condition? And then based on the discretion of the developers, each project would either achieve 68 feet height or 85 feet height? And then in lieu of that, they would have to provide 15 to 20% below-market rate housing and then provide amenities from list and list A and list B?
So the, the general idea, and remember last time we had this idea for a local density bonus ordinance and the thinking was that if we had something that was more attractive than state density bonus law as an incentive, then we can incentivize people to use this local system and require these certain benefits and the affordable housing that came with it. With this, the, the new framework, we're revising the base zones, we don't have the same kind of incentive. And so these are, the, the idea of having a list of options is a way to make it a little more flexible. But the thinking is that if you were to propose a three-story building that's within the envelope that's allowed today, you wouldn't have any of these community benefits or objective requirements required on your project. But as soon as you go above that 38-foot threshold and up to our 68-foot threshold, we have these objective requirements that you would need to choose from this list and provide. And so you're choosing voluntarily and so in that way, we're allowed to ask you to provide up to 20% below-market rate housing or ask you to do a mid-block connection if it works for that type of project. Now, once we get to our 85-foot threshold and that's when we're in that northern nodes or above 68 feet, then the ask is a little bit bigger because we're offering more of an incentive that could be beyond what you could do under state law. Then we're asking for a little bit more. So objectively, again, you choose from this list voluntarily, you know, what you would provide.
So 68 feet height, building height and 3.5 yard is not as of right. It is discretionary in return to a community benefits.
It's, I would say it is as of right. It is, it's allowed, it's part of the base district, but we also have these certain requirements that you need to meet. And so we call them community benefits or call them requirements, but in the same way that you need to, you know, update your sidewalk and the curb and the gutter, in the same way, you also need to do XYZ on the benefits list.
Understood totally, yeah. So then in that case, would we completely go away with 38 feet height? And designation? Okay, that is what my question was.
Yeah, I apologize, I can see how that's confusing. It was just, it's sort of a threshold of anything above today, you know, triggers these standards. And maybe there's a better way we can kind of write that, you know, or maybe it's just everything. You know, unless you're doing a two-story building, you know, this is, this is a different fact.
So 68 feet height comes with community, community benefits within our 20% of inclusionary housing and community benefits from list A and B. And then if in case the same site wants to go higher to 85 feet, then would the requirement for below-market rate in addition to what was, you know, as a part of requirement for 68 feet height?
That's right. So that, the, the thinking was, the proposal on, on the, the staff proposal here is that if you went above 68 feet, so you're at 80, 85 feet, you would be required to do additional below-market rate housing. Because now we're talking about, we're offering this, this additional height density and in exchange, you would need to provide more onsite affordable housing.
Right, so for 85 feet height, the project would have to provide 40% of the AMR?
Pardon, say the last part again, please.
For 85 feet height, the project would have to provide 40% of the AMR units?
20%, yes.
No, but 20% is provided to get 68 feet height?
No, so that it's an option. It's one of the benefits that you could choose from, from that list. That's the idea, that it's an or.
So basically, so you have to decide whether you want to go to 68 feet height with 25%, 20% BMR units? Or you want to go up to 85 feet with same amount of BMR?
So when you're going up to 68 feet, the, the additional BMR is a choice. You're required, under the inclusionary housing ordinance, to do 15%. The city, under state law, if the city wanted to require 20% BMR, we do need to do a study to determine that that's feasible and the state looks at that, blesses that and says, okay. So there's a couple of different steps if you wanted to make that requirement. What's proposed in that policy LU4 is that the increase in below-market rate from 15% to 20% is one of the optional amenities. So you either do that additional BMR or you provide an amenity from list A, a couple amenities from list B. It's an either-or option, so voluntary, not required.
In order to go up to 85 feet height?
In order to go up to 85, now we're talking about a different threshold, this sort of different tranche of, of height and density. Above 68 feet, you, we are saying we would require you to provide 20% below-market rate. Because at that point, it is, I'm voluntarily saying, okay, if you want more density and height in return, you need to provide 20% BMR housing.
So I'm sorry, I'm repeating it again. So up to 68 feet height, it is not, it is not compulsory, it is not mandatory?
That's right. It's one of the options.
Okay, so, okay, so you, you can go up to 68 feet without providing BMR and without providing community benefits?
Well, you, you still need to meet the existing requirement, which is 15%. The city has a 15% inclusionary requirement, so you still need to meet that.
Okay, so basic increase is just 5% from 15 to 20?
Right, and it's, it's an or when you're up to 68 feet and it's a requirement and and when you're beyond 68 feet.
Okay, and then my second question is kind of related to that. Like all projects larger than five units require, city requires 15% of inclusionary house. And once the project provides that, does the project automatically becomes eligible for state density bonus?
Yes, the way it is now, projects that are more than five units in Albany are eligible for state density bonus law typically because they're already meeting that, that onsite affordability threshold.
Okay, so basically all projects would be eligible for state density bonus on San Pablo Avenue?
I would say so, yes. As long as they, yeah, yeah.
And in that case, what would be the base FAR for state density bonus calculations? Because as you said, you know, FAR is 2.25 originally and then with discretionary, my, my, sorry, with inclusionary housing units, it would raise up to 68 feet and the FAR would be 3.5. And then the project becomes eligible for state density bonus. And so the state density bonus calculations, would they be based on 2.25 FAR or 3.5?
Short answer, so the way it is today, because there's a residential density factor, the state density bonus law is based on the maximum 68 units per acre. Under what we're proposing here, we have eliminated a residential density maximum. And so instead, yes, we could use FAR and the way it works in Berkeley, for example, which doesn't have residential density but has FAR, they essentially use FAR. They use FAR, average unit size to determine a, a base project. But the short answer is yes, you would, you would use that.
That's good, but then which, which FAR would we use? Because, you know, in order for achieving 68 feet height, you, you know, provided 15% of units, but then you automatically use 3.5 FAR.
Right.
But then you are existing, so that would be the base, not the existing 2.25 FAR.
No.
Okay.
If, if we changed it to 3.5, yes.
Got it, okay. And then under LU2, we have this exemption from commercial use on the ground floor and for 100% BMR, it is exempt. So is it exempt even at the node areas?
Yeah, that's a good question because it's not very specific here and so I'd be interested in, in feedback. But the, the thinking was that affording, affordable housing developers are not in the commercial retail business. And so to make it easier to finance their projects, simplify their projects, maximize the amount of housing, not to require ground floor retail. But you're right, we haven't clarified whether, you know, you could do that even if you're in the node. I can make a suggestion, but yeah, that's something we would need to tighten up.
Okay, but then they would be allowed to have non-residential common, common uses?
They'd be allowed to have common residential uses.
Okay.
Based on the feedback we've gotten from the commission to date, there wasn't a lot of interest in having ground floor residential units facing the street on San Pablo. And we talked about, it's not very conducive to that. So I think we, we heard that and it would be the common spaces, the bike room, the lobby, things like that.
Yeah. Okay, and then do we have any exemptions for the ground floor height for a project that has commercial on ground floor? Because we are looking at 68 feet height, 85 feet height and also, Mark also mentioned in his project, in his presentation, it is all about height, not the floors. You know, so developer could pack in as many floors as possible, you know, as long as, so if it is, you know, all residential project, that might be fine. But when it comes to commercial component, then do we have any requirement for height of the commercial floor? Because whether or not the developer wants to provide it certain height, the commercial spaces need certain height for them to work?
We have not identified a ground floor height here and we've kind of talked about it a little bit when we were talking about urban design. I think it's certainly something we could think about regulating. I do think in general, San Pablo Avenue doesn't really have the tall ceiling heights that we think of in some retail areas. So I don't know, I think it's something we should talk about, whether maybe there's a relationship to the data online of the business next door. Is there something different that's happening in the nodes versus in other areas of the corridor? But I would be interested to talk about, you know, what that height is. Is it, is it, do you want to see something taller like 18 feet? And, you know, when we're working on Jane Lynn, who's been working with me on this and you've seen some of her site tests, she's been kind of thinking about an 18-foot floor height and that's when you're talking about 68 feet and then getting those residential four floors above. But is it 14 feet? I don't know, I think that's something that would be probably good for the commission to talk about at some point. May not be today, but you know, in the next couple of months.
Okay, and then I have some questions about parking. So I'm expecting in the next stage of study, there will be transportation and traffic analysis. So would the impact of parking that would be, you know, developed on San Pablo Avenue be covered in that analysis?
No, the traffic study is not looking at parking. Part of it is that CEQA no longer studies parking as a topic. Unless there were something that we're really driving, like circling the block or things like that, but it's not typical here. The traffic study is looking at the the specific plan compared to the general plan that was adopted. I'm looking at, for example, we're proposing more housing units than were proposed in the general plan for the corridor. So looking at that net change and the potential impacts of trips from units from commercial development on the corridor as a result of this plan.
So it, it would not cover, it would not, you know, give us an idea about like what would be the total number of parking spaces that would be required along the whole corridor? And then what it would basically, how it would impact current parking situation? We, you know, looked at the parking study in a previous presentation and we looked at, you know, a kind of overflow and occupancy of certain streets. And I, I thought it would be, you know, useful to see how that occupancy would be affected by these new projects. Because a lot of those streets were like, you know, 65% occupied, which was, you know, kind of good. And so if this project comes, these projects come up, you know, would they be like 100%, 95%?
We're, we are not looking at occupancy as part of this. I mean, the idea is that the parking requirements for these individual projects, those parking requirements should serve the uses within the bounds of those, of that building. And I know we received some comments or some concern about the proposed requirement for unbundling. And so I think it's a, it's a valid concern that an unbundling requirement could lead to some people preferring to, instead of paying for parking onsite, to just park for free offsite. It is, you know, because it doesn't really lend itself to traffic, there's no physical impact under CEQA and so we're no longer look at parking in that way. But, you know, and this is a housing program and a housing document and so we don't, you know, we're, we're not looking at that as part of this scope of this project. But again, if it had traffic implications, then it would show up in our, in our analysis, but it, it hasn't.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, there are these policies about reduction parking. So if you provide bike parking, you can reduce 10% parking or things like that or, you know, clipper guard or things like that. And so you have maximum 10% of limit for the reduction. And then state density bonus also allows 50% reduction. So does it mean that some project would provide all these, you know, majors, reduce the parking to 50% already? And then use state density bonus and have zero parking?
Well, you need to choose. So you're either use the city's parking requirements or you could take advantage of the state law, the state density bonus requirements. So yeah, you would, you would choose. But the city, the way we have it proposed here, you could get up to a 50% reduction. So that would be 0.5 spaces per unit.
So, so in any case, the project would have at least 0.5, 0.5 parking space per unit?
Under the city's, the, the draft code proposed here, yes.
In either case, whether they were with state density bonus or with city's parking reduction norms?
I have to look at it again because it depends on where you are in the corridor. Typically, the state density bonus parking, I think it's one space per bedroom or it depends on the bedroom count. And you can do 0.5 spaces per unit if you're doing, Mark probably knows off the top of his head, but a, a rental project that's affordable up to a certain percentage within a half mile of transit. I'm not sure it covers, would that, yeah. In any case, under the, I think it might be about the same. I know I could look up, look it up if you want to keep going, I could look it up and then come back to you.
I just to give you the, kind of the textbook example, so as this commission has previously reviewed, the Albany Bowl project, that is a project that's coming in under the state density bonus law revisions that went into effect on the first of the year. That law does reduce it to 0.5 based, 0.5 parking spaces per unit based on the proximity to high-frequency transit. So given its proximity to the Plaza Bart Station, it qualifies for that parking requirement.
Okay, so my, my question is, it would be either this or that, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner McLeod.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the presentations. Well, I guess, I guess my big question is- Uh, yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentations. Um, well, I guess, um, I guess my big question is. You know, kind of the trade-offs for um, you know, the, the incentives. And then just trying to go back to the main policy goal, which for me is affordable housing. So for me, the priority is to do what gets us more affordable housing. Uh, which to my mind would mean requiring twenty percent BMR in all projects. So, you know, maybe Mark could speak to this a little bit. I know Berkeley has that requirement at twenty percent. And I'd also like to know how that timeline of applying to the state would fit into what we're doing here. Uh, you know, a lot of those other incentives, the builders are going to do anyway. I think all electric is going to be required. Berkeley, I don't know if it's enforced yet in Berkeley, the all.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is.
Uh, and I don't know why we don't adopt that here now. Um, it should be done. Uh, and the other ones are all just kind of common sense, you know, list B seems like things that are going to be done anyway mostly. So for me, it goes back to like the major policy goal, which is affordable housing. Um, so, you know, why don't we do the twenty percent? What does that take? Uh, it does have, um, obviously implications for how much projects will cost. Um, but we are adding a tremendous amount of value to all these lots, all these properties along San Pablo Avenue. So it is a way to, you know, um, get something back for that in a way. And then uh the second part of my question. Well, then I have a couple other questions, but maybe if you could address that, I, I think that would be my major concern.
Uh, Jeanie or Andy, you want me to address that?
Maybe you can start with the sort of twenty percent gut check feasibility or your experience with that and then we can.
Yeah.
The remainder.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I suspect that, you know, what you have right now isn't particularly developable. As far as standards are concerned along San Pablo Avenue, simply because there hasn't been very much. So it's not a exactly fair trade to say, well, we're giving all of this and it's becoming more feasible. Because right now, things probably aren't. So you're creating feasibility um with the standard you're proposing. But the best way to create affordable housing isn't an inclusionary requirement. Um, and that's a long battle that we've had in Berkeley over the last twenty-five years. And the best way to get more affordable housing built is what you guys are doing right now with SAHA. Uh, the city is in contract with SAHA. You've given them property, you gave them some A1 money and they're going to go build you a whole bunch of units. So, you know, let's talk for a minute about a hundred unit project. That's a big project, uh, would be a big project anywhere, even in Berkeley. And so the straight inclusionary requirement for a hundred unit project is going to get you twenty units. Embedded in an otherwise market rate project, there's no services provided or service enrichment from a nonprofit owner. Uh, and then the, the, your other eighty units are just standard market rate units. You get one hundred units out of that. Here's what's been happening in Berkeley and in Oakland and, and Richmond and other places. Where you have a housing trust fund and you're allowing it in lieu fee to be paid. That money is leveraging far more units um uh with, with, from those same projects. Than an inclusionary requirement. And let's talk about that for just a second. We have a hundred unit project in Berkeley um paid an in-lu fee. Um, uh, well, it, it got a density bonus, so it had a small percentage of ten percent of its base project units were affordable. And then it in-lu feed out of the balance of the units. And let's say that hundred unit project generated about a million and a half. Dollars in, in, in lieu fee that went straight into the housing trust fund. Well, Satellite Affordable Housing Associates in Berkeley, um, let me get a piece of paper because I've got it right here. Satellite Affordable Housing Units took uh two million dollars from the city's housing trust fund. And leveraged that with tax credit financing and built forty-two permanently affordable at fifty percent AMI service enriched housing units. So what the city of Berkeley got with, with the in-lu fee from one hundred units was one hundred. Ninety market rate units, ten affordable units and enough seed money to create forty-two more permanently affordable units. That's how you create affordable housing. Um, you know, inclusionary is just going to get you a few units here and a few units there. Take that money, give it to the nonprofits, let them come up with ways to build and spend it or rehab motels, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and that's where you're, that's in, in, from my thirty-one years as a city planner. That's the best way to generate affordable housing for any city in California.
Maybe I can start with sort of.
Oh, oh, go ahead.
Other parts of your question, I think if the city wanted to change the inclusionary housing requirement. It's probably a citywide action that may be considered as part of the housing element. It could be a recommendation for this plan. Um, I'm not sure you'd want to create a higher requirement along the corridor than there is in the rest of the city. Uh, but that's something just to consider. Um, but yes, we could, you know, have recommendations to do a study if, you know. It's opposite of what Mark said, but if that's something that, that folks are inclined to do.
You know, I would add that, that twenty years ago, Berkeley, twenty-five years ago, Berkeley actually relaxed the inclusionary requirement on the avenues. In order to try to, to spur development. And that, that relaxation lasted like fifteen years and then it sunsetted. But, but they reduced, I think it was by five or seven percent, the inclusionary requirement to try to, to try to get that development going.
I haven't really seen our in-lu fee, fee structure or we don't have a redevelopment or we don't have a development agency in Albany. So that would also be something that would be uh have to be created or looked at. Um, my next question is about FAR and why, why, I mean, my understanding is that FAR. Serves to reduce the size of the building from what's allowed within the setback envelope. So how is that affecting? What we can build and what is the point of having the FAR, having a low FAR? Um. You know, I mean, do we need an FAR for certain calculations or is it something that we can do away with entirely? And just let the building setbacks uh define the, the volume of the project. And Mark, maybe you could weigh in on that and Jean also.
That is absolutely a way to go. I mean, you know, Berkeley only has FARs in a couple of districts. Everything else is controlled by the zoning development standards. There's lot coverage, which sort of serves as a proxy in the lower density residential districts, but it goes away when you get to the commercial mixed use districts. Um, I, it, you know, I, I don't, uh, that's a good question and it's one that's perplexed me my entire career. Why, if you've got stories and you've got setbacks and in the case of what you're looking at, you've got some step, a step, at least one. And some, some space between the property line. You don't necessarily need another factor that might additionally control your yield. So, uh, you know, in, in my mind, you could do away with it because everything else is going to control for that envelope. And that even at five, that's going to sort of reduce the potential yield of a seven-story project. Because your setbacks aren't that big that they're going to reduce the FAR enough. So that becomes the, the controlling factor in a project yield in some cases.
So this sort of sounds a little bit more banal, but some of the reasons are that, you know, the city is working with the housing community development department right now. On the housing element and traditionally uh HCD, the agency and, and the regional housing needs assessment are pegged to density factors, residential density. And so we were trying to maintain some kind of standard uh so that the city can use to compare sites to understand density. Um, so, you know, if we do remove residential density, I just do want to be conscious of how that housing element process is working. Mark is totally right. You know, we see El Cerrito, we see parts of Berkeley just regulating height. And in this case, in the SPC district, we don't have a lot of standards, which makes it very flexible. There are some limited setback standards, but there's, there's no lot coverage standard. Um, so where you are with that box is really open. And so in the absence of FAR, we would have height, we would have, you know, this step back. Um, the rear setback that we're talking about uh and some other ways to mold the box. Uh, but otherwise, you know, it's, it is um, it's a, it's a ratio between the, the total floor area to the lot area, right? So there's something that you can at least compare across sites. Uh, whereas, you know, residential density, like I mentioned, is just much more ephemeral and so dependent on bedroom count that it's, it's a lot less helpful. Uh, it's not totally a response, but we were trying to maintain a standard for the purposes of like the city's compliance. And I know they're still kind of working with their HCD reviewer on how uh this change could be accepted, evolving, I would say. And if I can just jump in really quick as a quick time check, everyone, we only have forty minutes remaining on this item. Um, which puts us each at less than ten minutes for our comments, uh, and we still do have public comment to factor into that. So, um, if commissioners with hands raised wouldn't mind, I would love to be able to open it up for public comment first right now. And then we can kind of bring it back and, and, you know, feel free and use your commentary time if you do have any follow-up questions. Uh, but I'd like us to be able to reserve a little bit of time for comments and get through public comment in the next forty minutes.
Uh, sure, but Chair, um, if I could just say something, uh, to have a constrained amount of time in order to, in which to discuss this item. Uh, strikes me as problematic uh that we might need to continue this discussion. And there's also actually no legal requirement for us to stop at seven. Of course, we wouldn't want to go much past seven because we have another agenda to deal with. Uh, but I don't want to artificially constrain what is a very interesting and detailed and important uh discussion. I'll, I'll just leave it there and then let you uh proceed.
Sure. Yeah, let, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment and, and certainly these are study sessions. And I think if the commission doesn't feel like uh we've had enough time, we can certainly ask staff to, you know, come back so we can schedule this again. Or, or refine the scope of what we're discussing in future agendas. Um, but let's uh, let's just keep things moving for the moment and go ahead and open it up for public comment. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Yes, we'll let you uh take off here. Thanks for uh your insight into all of your years. And thank you for your many years of public service as well.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. One of my questions was for Mr. Rhodes. Um, can I, should I let it go or can I stick it in now?
Sure, if you can try to keep it concise.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Very, 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 and, and, and I'll depend on Mr. Rhodes to have a concise answer, but the concise question is. I'd like to think of, of us being in a competitive environment. We have to have, we want to make developers build in Albany versus Berkeley or El Cerrito. Are we getting there? Are we, are we going to, are we getting competitive enough to, to attract developers?
Funny, because that's what El Cerrito said about Berkeley when they were proposing their specific plan. And I was at that city council meeting where Melanie said it uh to her city council. And I thought, wow, that's interesting. And they did, they were successful. Uh, I think you guys are definitely on the right track because people, you know, they want to, I, I think you guys are very, very well situated. And um, yeah, I, I, I think you're going to get there, you know, you have some things to work out. But I, I think this is far better than where you are right now. Um, and this is going to push a lot of things into feasibility where they aren't at the moment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Rhodes. All right. And with that, staff, can we go ahead and open it up for public comment? And to members of the public, uh, now is the time for you to raise your hand if you would like to speak. So please uh go ahead and get in the queue if you'd like to comment on this agenda item.
Yeah, we have, uh, right now we have two hands raised, uh, now three. Um, so well, first speaker is Ed Fields. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'll try to get through this. Um, when Ms. Iceberg read our guiding statement from the general plan about the transformation of the corridor. Uh, she said something about higher density and I don't think those words are in that statement. So I just want to point that out. She also said, we're generally narrowing the exceptions to commercial on the ground floor. I'd like that explained. It looks to me like we're creating more exceptions. Hundred percent BMR is great, don't have to have commercial, but when you double the height limits. Every parcel is going to be a housing opportunity site on San Pablo Avenue. And they can just ask for no commercial if they want to and you'll grant it anyway. So I don't see that. Um. Important point, right now, density is the only controlling thing you have under state density bonus law. If you eliminate density, the developer goes to the state and says, I need a height waiver, I need an FAR waiver. I need a setback waiver in order to build the density that Albany allows, which is any density bad builder wants. So there are no controls whatsoever on the building envelope, on the height, on the setbacks. The project on Portland, that small three-story project, they got waivers for setbacks. All you got to do is say, I can't build it if you don't give me this. So if I want to build, you know, five hundred units per acre, I'm being ridiculous here. Then if I can build it, you've got to give me all the waivers I need. I can build the Millennium Towers if I want to. But it won't be tilting in Albany, right? You say you can't require greater than fifteen percent affordability without a state process, but then you put it in for projects over sixty-eight feet. So that seems contradictory, but that was the point I made in my letter that you're giving developers double and more height. And you're not getting affordable units in return. Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. For bringing that up. Mr. Rhodes talked about, we just need to put roofs over people's heads. Which people? Who are we up zoning for? I mean, at four thousand dollars plus for a small thousand square foot unit, who are we up zoning for? If we don't talk about affordability. Mr. Rhodes talked about a thirty-five foot separation between six-story and two-story single-family homes. Was he talking about across the street? Um. How many years does it take to put together the financing that he talked about if we even had a housing department in the city? Versus getting the twenty units of affordable housing built in the hundred unit project. Um, the statement was made that you can't do more than sixty-eight feet under state density bonus law. Where does it say that? There's, you just get an exception for height to build the density that you.
Okay, the next speaker with a hand raised is Harry Chomsky.
Good evening, Commission, and thanks for this session. And I really appreciated um having uh such a good presentation from a real live developer. Who gave a good perspective on what's feasible and what's not. And it's good to know that he thinks what we're looking at is pretty feasible for the most part. When it comes to requirements that you impose. I, I would ask you to stop and think about what is the objective of this requirement? If the purpose of a requirement is to make the developer do something that they would not do otherwise. And ultimately to make the people who are going to live there do something that they pay for something that they would not pay for otherwise. So, so make sure it's something that really has value to the city. Um, when it comes to parking requirements, having parking requirements as opposed to having no parking requirements is basically saying that we want people to use more cars. We want people to take away space that they could use for living and instead. Use it for cars and create an incentive for people to have more cars and drive more. If you don't have a parking requirement, developments will still have parking. It's not saying we're going to take away all parking. It's just that they'll have the amount of parking that the developer thinks is needed. And that they think they can, that they can get residents to come with that amount of parking. And they're not going to build projects with too little parking for the environment. Uh, when it comes to bike parking, I think the calculus is a little different. Because people may not think about that when they're deciding what, where to move to. It's not as much on people's minds and if you decide that it's a goal of the city. To encourage more bicycling as an alternative to driving. Then a bike parking requirement could be a, a great role for the commission to, to impose. So I would um encourage you to, to, to decrease the car parking requirement and increase the bike parking requirement as much as you're willing to do. Um, and I know people are worried about the spillover effect of reducing car parking. And that can be managed by um placing the street parking under parking management system, which it's not now. Um, as long as people prefer to have street parking be unpriced, then it's going to be a little bit competitive at times. And that can work in some environments. It works in most places in Albany now. Um, at some point, it may seem that that doesn't work as well anymore. And we may have a revised parking study that shows that pricing street parking is appropriate. And that would be the time to start doing that. So I think there are ways to fix any problems that arise if people, if developments are built with less car parking than we're expecting. Thank you.
The next speaker is Clay Larson. Clay, you have three minutes.
Hi, um, I, I sent an email, actually a rather long email. I won't try to go.
I won't try to go over, over all of them. I will reiterate that I think this whole specific plan process has been wrong headed and actually illegal from the start. It's also been a waste of time. I think that the 540 San Pablo Avenue Albany Bowl project shows that the application of state density bonus law to existing developmental standards can produce all the infill development that we could possibly want. Some would say more than we want. There's absolutely no need for, and some disadvantages to trying to accommodate this level of development in our base standards. I also think that, that trying to satisfy all the Albany's regional housing needs allocations on one street is not fair. And it's actually another violation of current state law. I think that the consultant's proposal to replace the current daylight plane requirements with an in and using the consultants' own words, a refined setbacks that are more contextually appropriate is cynical. The consultants' measures do not provide the protections to the applicants to the adjacent low density neighborhoods called for in the general plan and provide much less buffering, interestingly, than is provided by the setback requirements in Berkeley and El Cerrito. More generally, I, I think that because of the close proximity of all the parcels on San Pablo Avenue to the low density neighborhoods on, on Canes and Adams, very high density development on the 100 feet deep San Pablo parcels should not be permitted at all. First, through the black parcels, okay, development on the Canes and Adams street fronts should conform with the current R3 zoning. Again, I think that the 540 San Pablo Avenue project shows that the developers have all the flexibility that they need with the current zoning requirements and and the current general plan. The specific plan process has been a waste of time and a waste of money. I, I did see one of the thing, so that's, those are the comments I wrote down. The, the, I noticed again, and I mentioned this before, that, that the consultant's little picture of, of boxes showing the heights in Albany and Berkeley and El Cerrito, for, for the Berkeley and El Cerrito, we, she added, or the consultant added the density bonus amounts, making them look taller. That kind of spin, that kind of bullshit, actually. It, it has made this, and it's not the only example, I can find other examples, has made the report less valuable than it could have been. All right. I, I'm also commenting regarding the first speaker, the, the the idea of just cutting people off at a specific time, mid-sentence is, is bureaucratic and and mechanical. And it calls into question how much you really want to hear from the public. All right, thanks.
Next speaker is Nick Peterson. Nick, you have three minutes.
Yeah. Hi, Nick Peterson. I'm a resident of Albany. Also am on the Climate Action Committee, but I'm speaking strictly as a resident and as a person interested in trying to address our need for housing and our need to move away from a, a type of living that's very detrimental to our environment in general, and that's using cars and single passenger vehicles to get around. So we're making a plan here and I, I, rather than some of the other people that have commented, I realize you know, we're trying to find certain areas in Albany where we can, in fact, increase density. And we have done that with the ADU allowances, which I am actually considering for my own property, does increase, now that FAR has been overridden, does increase the density of the single family residential actually quite a bit. So finding places where we can even do more of that in an urban area seems very straightforward. So I, I think it's important for us to push forward and kind of not, I, I mean, Albany is a very unique kind of little town. And, and there's a, a lot of, I mean, I enjoy its low density to a certain degree, but I think we can bring high density and encourage alternatives to just car mobility. And so I do encourage especially the use of increased bicycle parking. Having looked into this recently for myself, I think electrified bicycle usage is going to become more and more significant. So the idea of the long tail bikes or just bikes that are used more like cars are used now to actually do your shopping, which I do myself, is going to become more significant. And these bikes, I, you know, I notice when I read through some of the requirements, you know, they want a lot of electricity available for them, not really that necessary because usually people take the batteries out and take them up to their units and charge them there. So just having the space for the bikes instead of just a room where everyone packs them in and it's really difficult to get to. It would be nice to accommodate these electrified bikes in definite parking areas that are secure and adequate enough. So I think you guys are on sort of the right idea here. I realize it's very stressful for people seeing that this will change, especially those who live directly and adjacent to these areas that will get a little bit more dense. But if we keep our mind, our eye on the the prize, which is a better, more mobile environment where people can use alternative transportation, existing transportation, we're going to get a higher density in Albany that's livable. Thank you.
There are no more hands raised that I can see. Thank you. This is the last call to members of the public. Oh, it looks like we have one more that just started. Nico Nagle, you have three minutes.
Hi, all. Thank you for the three minutes. Ideally, I will be quick. Just want to appreciate everyone who jumped on tonight. I want to appreciate you all taking up the issue. I just, earlier someone spoke up and said, it's not fair to put all this density in the San Pablo corridor. I, I, I would push back on that. I would say that, that's a feature of, of the plan and it's part of what makes the, the plan make sense. We want homes to be near transit and to be near main throwaways. We want them to be accessible. We want them to be, you know, the right places to put density. It, it's about creating efficient living and moving us toward our shared green goals. The, the most density that can be put on areas like the San Pablo corridor is, is the best way to build. Over and over again, we've seen that be factually correct. And so, so I, I just, I had to take the opportunity to push back on that. I think that's, you know, it's not an issue, it's a feature. You know, San Pablo is meant to be lively. It's meant to be a, a place where people go to congregate and to live their lives. And I'm glad to see you, you all are pursuing that as, as a feature of the plan.
Great, thank you. This is last call to members of the public. Any remember, remaining folks who'd like to speak, please raise your hand now. All right. Seeing no additional members of the public, we'll go ahead and close public comment and turn it back to the commission for discussion. If folks don't mind, I'll just go ahead and kick off a couple of initial thoughts that I have. And I will try to keep it to less than five minutes and hopefully everyone else can. And again, happy to, oh, staff.
Just wanted to put one reminder out there. We were intent on using the attachment one to the staff report. That is the rubric of options. And we were hoping to do a straw poll vote to have the benefit of all five commissioners weighing in to, to get a little more concise guidance on where we're going, who supports the proposed policies or if a modification needs to be made.
Great. And why don't we go ahead and open up that straw poll now and then we'll turn to comments? Or do you not have that? Do you have that queued up?
I sure do. I'm going to second to share my screen here. Okay, so the way we envision this happening, you can see this is the table that was included in your packet. My thinking was we would just go down the line here. We are all familiar with what the existing standards are. We have the proposed amendments. I think what we'll do is vote on that first, see where we land. And then if a modification has to be made, the commission can, can discuss that. So I guess we'll just, we'll go from the top and do this in real time. So on the proposed amendment of 68 feet, six stories and 85 feet, eight stories at the north node, we'll just go right down the line. Commissioner Donaldson, do you support that?
Oh, and Commissioner Donaldson, you're on mute.
I thought I was unmuted. Sorry. I, the answer is no. I support 58 feet. And and now that I've had a chance to look at it, I have problems with the higher density at the north end of the town. I, I don't, I haven't, I don't understand the rationale for doing that. Exactly. So I'm worried about that going up high, like 85 feet. Okay.
Commissioner McLeod? Commissioner McLeod, do you support the proposed amendment of 68 feet, six stories, 85 feet, eight stories at the north node?
It's a little difficult to do this, some of this without discussion. I mean, generally, I, the more I think about it, the more I support eight stories at the whole corridor. But with perhaps, you know, trading off a list of community benefits for above six stories. So I mean, that would be a qualified yes, but I, I still would, would like to see it changed in its wording. And then I'm not really convinced about the nodes really. So you know, there are other ways to look at it in terms of within a half mile of a transit stop, but I didn't get to ask another question I wanted to ask about what is considered to be a major transit stop along the corridor? And bus rapid transit would be that. So I mean, I don't know. It seems like we still need a lot of discussions. So but that would be a qualified yes for that.
Okay. Commissioner Momen, do you support the proposed amendment?
Yeah, my question is, the answer is also similar to Mr. McLeod. You know, it looks like we are looking at 85 feet height corridor along the whole length of San Pablo Avenue, which has a state density bonus and 68 feet height and 85 feet base height, you know, would not make a major difference in that. No one is going to exceed 85 feet with state density bonus. But it is very easy to achieve 68, 85 feet with state density bonus. And so it looks like it is going to be kind of a level that, you know, a issue where it would make difference is if it is 58 feet height, there is more likelihood to get more community benefits for, so that people would provide more community benefit in order to actually 85 feet height. And so only for that reason, I would support 58 feet height. Otherwise, I'm okay with 68.
Okay. Commissioner Pilch?
I'd say my answer is closer to Commissioner McLeod. I, I prefer eight stories, yes, and eight stories on the whole corridor.
Can't you eat up here?
Okay. And I will ask Commissioner Wadi, although I think her, she may have had an internet connection issue.
Sorry, I'm back in. Sorry, dropped me for a second. Yes, I support 68 with 85 at the north node.
Okay. All right. Then moving right on down the line into the SPC R3 height transition. So the existing condition is daylight plane. The proposed amendment includes setbacks, new and upper stories, setbacks. Commissioner Donaldson?
Generally, yeah, I, generally I do. I have some, some questions. And I've been listening to the public comments we have. So I have concerns about it. Yes, but with concerns.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner McLeod?
I would say yes, but as well, I have other concerns or thoughts. And, and part of it would be if we are up zoning R3, how that's affected and how that would be integrated into these setbacks and step backs, et cetera. And I'd like to, and I think we need more specific information on the step backs.
Commissioner Momen?
Yeah, I'd support. I would refer to Mark's presentation about open space dimensions. And so the 10 feet setback might not be qualified as open space. So we should look at that standard along with this. But otherwise, I'm okay with 10 feet setback and went to be up to that.
Great. Commissioner Pilch?
Yes, I support. And my comments are similar to the other commissioners. I would say yes, but tweaks may be needed.
Okay. And Commissioner Wadi?
Yes, I support getting rid of daylight plane and having setbacks. I'm not sure I support the need for additional step backs, but I support setbacks and the daylight plane.
Okay. Great. And then on to residential density. We're all familiar with the minimum and maximum existing conditions. The proposed amendment of 30 dwelling units per acre and no maximum. Commissioner Donaldson?
I support developing a maximum. We must have a maximum.
Okay, so that's a no. Okay, Commissioner McLeod?
Yes, I'd say yes.
Okay. Commissioner Momen?
I support no maximum.
Okay. Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Wadi?
Yes.
Okay. Or area ratio, going up to the 3.5 or 4.5 at the northern node. Commissioner Donaldson?
I think we should start with the 3.0 that's in the general plan. And we haven't discussed the general plan enough. And I, I don't know where the 3.5 came from. And that leap was made without considering the general plan.
Commissioner McLeod?
I would support going higher or eliminating it altogether.
So that, that, that's a no, I think, right?
Well, that would be a no to the current, I mean.
No to the current proposal?
Well, yeah, I think I would like it to be higher or discuss.
Okay, that, that's fine.
Eliminating it and the implications of that.
Commissioner Momen?
I support 3.5, but I'm not clear why two lots are allowed higher. We should have more discussion on that. And what is the rationale there?
Commissioner Pilch?
I'm going to say yes, but also support higher or elimination.
Okay. And Commissioner Wadi?
I'm similar to others. I'd say no as currently proposed, but support increasing it higher or removing FAR altogether for a suspension.
Okay, so that, that seems like the same answer as me, but Chair was no and I was a yes. I wanted to be positive.
All right. On the matter of open space, a reduction from 200 square feet of common open space per unit to 100 square feet. Commissioner Donaldson?
I'll say yes.
Okay. Commissioner McLeod?
I would say yes, but I, I could be persuaded we could reduce it a little bit more.
Okay. Commissioner Momen?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Pilch?
Yes, but also support 80.
Okay. And Commissioner Wadi?
Yes, and similarly I'd support 80 per unit too.
Okay, great. Let's keep going here. Everyone's favorite topic, residential vehicle parking. Commissioner Donaldson?
Yeah, let's see what I have here.
Condition is one space per unit. What's proposed is keeping that standard in place, one space per unit, except allow buy right reductions for bike parking and transit incentives.
I'd say yes, yes. And I think we should have rules that do not allow any reductions to go lower than 0.75. We must have a minimum of 0.75 in all. We must have a minimum of 0.75 in all projects.
Commissioner McLeod?
I do not support it, I think we should have no minimum and even consider maximums. And, and I think the bike parking should be dealt with separately, you know, for the most part. And if I may, I think transit passage should also be just a requirement as a part of a transit demand management, transportation demand management program.
Okay, Commissioner Momen?
I think one should be maximum. And I support 0.5 reduction as a side with bike parking measures.
So that's, that's a yes with reduction?
Yep.
Commissioner Pilch?
No, I support no minimum and a maximum.
Okay, and Commissioner Wadi?
Yes, support as proposed, but would want the bike parking to be above and beyond. There should be a baseline bike parking standard that does not exceed.
Okay, great. Residential bike parking, right now, the requirement is one protected bike space per unit. The proposed is one space per unit plus long tail bike and electric bike socket requirements. Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner McLeod?
I'm a little confused, so the long tail bike requirement is what exactly?
As I understand it, it would be required to be included currently, we don't have a standard that requires long tail bike parking?
Well, I, I do not support the standard, I think it should be much more robust, I think it should be one regular bike plus one cargo bike, and then the electric outlet requirements as part of it.
And you said an electrical outlet for?
Well, electrical outlets, you know, generous amount of electrical outlets to allow charging in the bike room, protected bike room. Not all, not all batteries are removable. Some are not, not a lot.
Commissioner Momen?
I support minimum one, maximum could be anything.
Okay, Commissioner Pilch?
I'm gonna say no and support two per unit. It's the same as Commissioner McLeod, one regular space and one cargo space per unit.
Okay, and Commissioner Wadi?
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along, use limitations. Require ground floor commercial in the nodes, allow residential only projects for 100% BMR projects on the housing element sites outside of the nodes or with a conditional use permit. Commissioner Donaldson?
I think it's a no, I want to eliminate housing element sites outside of nodes, and I want to eliminate the CUP.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner McLeod?
Well, let's see, I would like to see commercial along the whole corridor required except for 100% BMR.
That's what I'm saying.
Eliminate the other options.
Okay, so, so no as proposed, but similar to Doug?
Yeah, I think more commercial should be required and, you know, create a better fabric for the street.
Okay, Commissioner Momen?
Mine's are the same. Except 100% BMR for that commercial should be allowed, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Pilch?
Sorry, what's the CUP again?
A conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure whether to go yes or no, I mean, I, I think we might be in agreement, the commissioners, that we I don't want to require commercial everywhere if it means that we can't get development because it's out of reach, it doesn't pencil out, but I do want to strongly encourage commercial everywhere, so however you want to write that. So I guess, I guess, I guess generally in favor, but with stronger incentives or requirements for commercial outside of nodes.
Okay, and Commissioner Wadi?
I'm similarly partial, so I agree with an exemption for 100% BMR, and I would just strike the housing element sites, so allow residential only 100% BMR or with CUP. Which is, I think, what Commissioner Pilch was saying, so on a case by case basis, some, some fully residential, but with extra scrutiny.
Okay, great, community benefits, our existing standard is the 15% affordable housing, and what's proposed is the 15 to 20% affordable housing and/or transportation sustainability and public art improvements. Commissioner Donaldson?
Wow, hard to know yes and no on this one. Based on the presentation tonight, I'd be inclined to stick with 15%. And I think that the other items, the checklist we have require a lot of additional discussion, is all I can say. The selecting of, of what the, the community benefits are needs more discussion.
Okay, Commissioner McLeod?
Similar, I am, you know, still thinking about the 20% affordability. But yeah, we, we need to revisit that whole, both those lists, how it's structured. You know, how it would kick in, et cetera. I have a lot of questions about all of that, and I'm a little doubtful about a lot of those things on the lists.
Okay, Commissioner Momen?
I think we need more clarity on what is the requirement for 68 feet height and what is the requirement for 85 feet? And if there is anything voluntary or not. But otherwise, I support at least 15% of affordable housing for 68 feet height and 20% for 85 feet height. And I agree, there should be more discussion on the other community benefits. There might be some additions to those lists, and there could be some interchanges between list A and B.
Okay, Commissioner Pilch?
In general agreement with the rest of the commissioners that we need some more discussion on that, so I'll say yes. But my emphasis would be on making the 20% BMR you know, be, be highly incentivized to be very attractive for developers to do, I don't know, however, however you want to put that.
Okay, great, and Commissioner Wadi?
A little bit of a variation here, too, so I would support 20% as a, as a standard for the upzoning, even if that requires an additional NEXA study. I think some of the sustainability features probably need more discussion, but I think that should just be a baseline mandatory. I don't actually love the option of either or on the BMR and other improvements, I think the BMR should be mandatory. Some of the sustainability should be mandatory, and then I think only for really, really large projects, so not all of the projects that take advantage of this. Paying in lieu fever for the transportation improvements and for providing onsite public art. So sorry, that's hard to capture.
Definitely more, more discussion on these aspects, and that seems to be the kind of universal consensus. Okay, well, I'm gonna stop my share now that we've gone through the straw poll voting and turn it back to the commission.
Okay, great, and, and I think actually the straw poll is really helpful, I think at this point that probably helps to refine the areas where we've got pretty strong consensus versus the areas where maybe we need a follow-up meeting to, to have additional commentary. With that, I'll go ahead and try to keep some of my final comments concise and sort of get rid of the commentary that I think we addressed in the straw poll. So let me see if there's anything else I should say. Oh, I think the, the one remaining, two remaining items that didn't really get addressed in any way on the straw poll were both mid-block cut through and the conversation around retail, so I'll just discuss those really quickly. The retail comment around sort of a mandatory 10,000 square foot size, and I'm not sure if I totally captured this right. I definitely have some concerns about that, I think when we start looking at requiring that size of retail, the likelihood is that we're gonna only get a chain store, I don't think we're really gonna get any local businesses that are of a 10,000 square foot size. And although I certainly think San Pablo Avenue should be the place in Albany where those things are, are, you know, that's where we want them to be funneled. I also don't think we necessarily want to be out here just trying to attract only those types of businesses. I think businesses that are under the, the 5,000 square foot size limitation is probably more of the sweet spot for trying to create a pedestrian oriented environment. So I would be inclined to just be silent on the issue of retail size and not have it be something we're trying to incentivize at a large size. I think with that, it kind of correlates directly with ground floors, floor to ceiling heights, I think if you've got retail sizes that are under 5,000 square feet, you know, a 15 foot floor to ceiling height is perfectly sufficient, I think it's only when you really get into those big box store sizes where you're needing the 18 foot and above ceiling heights. So that's sort of my commentary around that, and maybe more discussion on that, and then the other point on mid-block cut throughs. I, I think the only time where it's really appropriate to have those is in very, very unusual circumstances. I think the bowling alley is probably one of the few sites where it makes sense to have one where they're proposing one anyhow. But A, I think there needs to be a sufficient aggregation of lots where you have at least, you know, a three or 400 foot long street frontage to make it make sense. But also, those need to be through lots, and I think the likelihood of having through lots aggregated to that width is not terribly likely. You know, you might be able to aggregate along San Pablo, but I doubt those are gonna all be through lots, otherwise I just don't think it's terribly pragmatic to mandate that cutting through onto a residential block on either side of San Pablo. So, you know, maybe we reserve a certain suite of public improvements that are required for sort of exceptionally large projects, you know, if somebody were to develop, you know, a full city block and aggregate a full city block, we might want to have different treatments apply to those types of projects than just your, you know, typical, you know, two parcel, you know, lot aggregation on San Pablo. So with that, just for the sake of time, I'll cut my comments short, I think we kind of hit on the other items in the straw poll, so thanks. Commissioner Pilch, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I won't speak for too long, but I want to strongly support your comments about the lots, about the size, the commercial square footage size. And as far as cut throughs go, I mean, I think we want to incentivize those as much as possible, those can be a great community benefit, especially since many of our, our streets don't align, you know, like all of them, I don't think align except for Marin and Buchanan. You know, those cut throughs can be a big benefit, but yeah, requiring them, yeah, it could be problematic. I just also want to say that I sent a detailed list of comments and questions to staff. Due to time constraints, I won't go over that now, but I do think that we will need, you know, another meeting to work through some of that. I don't think this meeting was enough time to, to cover all the issues that were presented to us, that's it.
Any other commissioners have any final comments that they would like to share on this? It sounds like we'll probably have several more meetings to come on this topic, oh, okay, Commissioner Momen?
Yeah, just some minor suggestions on parking. I like the idea of conversion of unneeded parking, but I think there should be some clear criteria on the evaluation of post occupancy study, how the parking is utilized and how much of the parking, how many of the residents actually are using on-street parking and things like that. And then I really think that we should increase the proportion of compact parking spaces that makes a big impact on the requirement of the needed area, garage area. So currently, the code requires up to 25% of parking spaces to be compact, I think we should make it minimum 25% and maximum 50%. And then we should also include a requirement for loading for car share like Zipcar, because the code and the staff report is talking about Uber and Lyft, which is kind of completely different provision. Uber and Lyft could be dropped off at curbs or similar to what Albany Bowl did, and that could be a drive-through or something. But for Zipcar or similar rental cars, you need dedicated parking spaces inside of garage or outside. And so we should recommend some parking for that. And then we should have clear guidelines for transit, like Clipper cards. Now, since we are supporting that more for reduction of parking, I think there should be some guidelines on the value of the Clipper card, and there should be some idea about increasing that over time as the transit costs increases. And then we should also have some guidance on the EV connections to the certain number of spaces. Now, since we are talking about more and more cars being electrical, we should have a certain percent dedicated for electrical vehicles. That's it.
Great, thank you, Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I agree with a lot of these comments. Just going back to parking, I think the cost of parking and how it affects rent and affordability is a big issue, and I don't think that's been really discussed. You know, apparently, and I think parking should be unbundled as well, I don't think we voted on that, or we should have, I think, but I would support unbundling. You know, one of the key things here is affordability, and more parking costs more money, and it translates into rent, so it makes makes rents higher, and it can be a big difference for people. So, you know, I think that should be taken into account when we're looking at this kind of thing. You know, I'd like to, you know, call everyone's attention to Dan Johnson's letter, which had about 20 cited articles, it was quite a, quite an effort. To look through that, I mean, the whole trend and the whole, all over the country is to go to no minimum parking and for lots of good reasons, and it's all detailed in a lot of those articles that he cites, so I think that should be something, I would encourage everyone to look at that. You know, and I still have doubts about the parking studies that I've seen in the staff presentation or the consultant's presentation, that it won't displace units. Like, there's been very limited modeling done, and it has not, there's a very, there's a big lack of specificity there. And I compared it to the Albany Bowl project, and it doesn't really pencil out what I see that the modeling does in the, in the presentation. And it certainly, I don't see how it could possibly pencil out at six, seven, and eight stories to not require two, two floors or underground parking. So I think we really need better mark, parking modeling before we really make decisions about how much to require, especially if we get up to eight stories. You know, I asked for that a long time ago, and it hasn't happened, these little blocky diagrams and the floor plates, you know, when I compared it to the Albany Bowl project, it just didn't work with what I saw in the consultant's presentation there, so I think that needs to be looked at. You know, otherwise, you know, I think we should still have more robust bike parking. What we're trying to do is mode shift, get people out of their cars, it creates a better urban environment, it's transit oriented development, we want to prepare for the future with bus transit, park close within walking distance or a quick bike ride away, and prepare for an electric bike future so that we get a more livable city with fewer cars eventually, and it's an evolution, I understand that. It's not gonna happen, you know, with the first project or first two projects. I think we also have to consider that automated vehicles are coming, and there will be fleets of them. And they are gonna be circling around, picking up people as they are needed and dropping people off, and they will not need to be parked at a housing site, they will be parked somewhere remotely. So I think a lot of this stuff still needs to be looked at. So I, that's it for now, I think we have a lot more to discuss going forward, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes, am I on? Um, yes, I am in favor of bundled parking, I think in Albany, that is what we must do given our circumstance situation with, with the existing neighborhoods on both sides of San Pablo Avenue. So along the San Pablo corridor. So along the San Pablo corridor, if we unbundle the parking, we're going to have hundreds of new residents taking advantage of our free city parking and we won't have anything to do about it. And the quality of life for uh, a, a large area of our city will be adversely affected. I, I feel real strongly about that. And uh, so uh, anyway, I, there are many other comments to make, but we should move on, I think. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, and Commissioner Pilch, you.
Yeah, I, I can be brief, uh, just since the topic of parking came up again. Um, I, I, I favor unbundling. That's actually in the staff report that, that it should be unbundled for rental. Um, and I think for condos as well, we should add that. Um, but you know, I, I would just ask the commissioners, consider this. The goal is to reduce, is to change San Pablo Avenue from car centric to pedestrian oriented. And yet it looks like we're not going to change the parking requirements or bicycle requirements. Uh, I don't get how those two jive. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and with that, it looks like that concludes all the commissioner comments um for the moment. Obviously, there'll be more to come on this. Um, we're about 10 minutes over, which is no problem. Why don't we go ahead though and close the special hearing? Um, the 5:00 PM special hearing and now turn over onto our regularly scheduled 7:00 PM Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, maybe just quick question for staff here. Uh, I assume we can just jump right into it. Um, same, same link and all of that. Just want to confirm.
You could go into it if you want, though. Um, we've been sitting for a little over two hours, so if anyone needs a break.
Sure. Why don't we go ahead and take a four minute break, come back and we'll restart at 7:15 on the dot. If that works for folks, just a little nature break. Okay, great. Then to the public, we will be back on at 7:15. Thank you. All right, it is 7:16 now. It looks like we may still be uh short, just two commissioners. So just ask all commissioners, when you're back and ready to start up again, please turn on your video. All right. It looks like we've got everyone back. Um, we'll go ahead, just because we took a little break, we'll go ahead and uh start things back up from the top here. So we'll go ahead and have roll call for our 7:00 PM regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, of course. Um, Commissioner Donaldson.
Uh, here.
Commissioner McLeod.
Here.
Your moment.
Yep.
Commissioner Pilch.
Present.
Chair Wadi.
Here. Thanks. Uh, next up, ex parte communications. I think we went over this at the beginning, but just to cover our bases, any ex parte communications for the regular agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move along to item four, which is our consent calendar. Uh, the consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted on by one motion. Approval of the consent calendar uh means that the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission. There'll be no separate public comment on any of these items unless a member of the public or commission uh chooses to remove any of these items from the consent calendar. Um, and just before we get started, staff, did you uh mention to me earlier that there's a, a additional item that needs to be continued due to the story poll issue or is that listed?
Uh, that's actually the, it's under public hearing. Um, it's going, a recommendation is to continue that, but we received a, a fair amount of public comments. So we thought it best to, you know, hold the conventional public hearing and then um, you know, give the applicant their feedback and continue it to a date.
Okay, so we'll cross that bridge um as, as scheduled tonight. Okay, great. Then we will go ahead and just stick with the item, three items that are agendized on the consent calendar. First up, we have item four dash one, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes from September 8th. Item four dash two, uh, planning application 21 dash 052, design review for a two level addition at 1467 Portland. Uh, which is a continuance to a date uncertain, which means we will be getting that renoticed and start things from scratch um at a later date. And then item four dash three, planning application 21 dash 061, design review and parking reduction for a two level addition at 1101 Keap Road. Um, on those three items, uh, do any commissioners wish to move uh or, or change any of those three for discussion?
I have a minor comment on the minutes. Should I do that? I, it's a one word change.
Sure, why don't we go ahead and do that? Likely there aren't other comments on the minutes.
Yeah, um, on page six, uh, line 13. Um, it's Planning Manager Hirsch advised that the property owner is sponsoring and it's about the charging stations. I think we should, that what Ann was really saying is that it wasn't the owner, not UC, that was, it was the lessee or the operator of the shopping center. Um, so I would change the word owner to lessee in the minutes. Other than that, I, I'm fine with him.
Right, uh, just as a point of clarification, um, and this is actually a question for Chris. I don't, it's not UC that's sponsoring this, isn't it? It is the shopping center owner of the, the owners of the project.
Chris said last time.
It is the shopping center owners um who are sponsoring this.
Shopping center owner. Okay, all right.
See, has a ground lease.
Right then, I guess that's the right word, but they're not the property owner. Okay.
Perhaps we can say shopping center owner.
That'd be fine. That's perfect. That's perfect. Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Donaldson, was that your only comment on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and we've got several hands tonight. Okay, Commissioner Pilch, did you have, uh, would you like to pull any of these items off the consent calendar?
Uh, just that I have, I would like to vote separately on the minutes. Since I wasn't there, I'll just go ahead and abstain on that vote.
Sure. Uh, great. And then Commissioner Moment.
Yeah, I just have minor uh correction uh, uh, to uh be done in the minutes. Uh, on page three, line 10, uh, I did not uh vote on that project, PA 21 052. I actually refused from voting on that project. And I voted project on the project number PA 21 060. So it should be switched.
Got it. They were flipped, which we voted on and refused. Okay, great. So it sounds like to recap then, on the minutes, we will clarify for the electric vehicle charging station from the 8th. That's the shopping center owner. And then we will make the correction of flipping Commissioner Moment's vote in terms of the recusal versus the voting action. Um, if I've summarized that correctly, um, with those two amendments, would somebody like to make um then a motion uh on the consent calendar amending the meeting minutes with those two items?
I, I could move um approval of the consent calendar with those modifications.
Great. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, great. And all of this vote is understanding Commissioner Pilch that you'll be refusing yourself on item four dash one. Um, so on those meeting minutes, Commissioner McLeod.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Pilch.
Yeah, yeah, technically an extension from the minutes.
Yes. Um, Commissioner Moment.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes as well. Uh, so those items vote uh five zero and items four two and four three and uh, four uh yeses and one assumption on item four dash one.
Yes.
Great. Uh, with that, we will uh move along on our agenda. Next up is item five, announcements and communications. None are agendized and seeing none from staff. We will move on to general public comment, item six on our agenda. Uh, this is general public comment for members of the public who wish to address the commission on items that are not otherwise agendized on today's calendar. Um, including the specific plan, so items not agendized on either the special hearing or the regular hearing. Uh, if you would like to address the commission, now is your time. Please go ahead and get in the queue and raise your hand if you would like to speak under general public comment. Um, staff, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak in general public comment this evening?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment then and move along to item seven on our agenda, which is uh possible action items. Uh, this evening, we've got two items up. Um, we'll go ahead and call the first item. So item seven dash one. Uh, this was continued from our last hearing. This is planning application 21 dash 062, the UC Village Master Sign Program Amendment. Uh, and we have a staff presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, once again, we have before you planning application 21 dash 062, the UC Village Master Sign Program Amendment. I'll do a real brief um overview of the project proposal and then we are happy to answer any questions afterwards. Um, some background on the uh, on the project, um, on September 9th, 2015, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the master sign program for the UC Village Shopping Center. Master Sign Program provides regulations for signage proposed on the buildings on site as well as a freestanding site. There are, however, no regulations, restrictions for electric slash digital signage. A recent review, on September 8th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments to the Master Sign Program, provided feedback to staff and continued the matter to a date certain of September 22nd, 2021 tonight. The commission requested a representative from the EV charging unit manufacturer Volta or an applicant from the proposed EV charger installation permit to be pres- present to answer any technical questions. This is street view of the subject site. Everyone should be pretty familiar with this. Um, analysis, building permit. A building permit application was filed with the Community Development Department for two electric electric vehicle chargers at the UC Village Shopping Center. Conduit, conduit was installed as part of the shopping center construction, but was never connected to chargers. The proposed charging units um include a 55 inch media display, uh, free electricity. Um, for the vehicle charging is supported through third-party advertising content. All signage proposed on the charging units is through the media display themselves and the advertisement content is thus dynamic and ever-changing based on paid sponsors. Um, and here's a schematic sketch of the um proposed charging units for the UC Village Shopping Center. And then here's some photos from uh similar units which are located um at the Veranda, which is a shopping center located in Concord. Um, they are similar, but not exactly the same as the ones being proposed for the UC Village Shopping Center. And then um, here's the location of the proposed charging unit sites. And then amendment, amendment initiation, the city has initiated the proposed amendment to the UC Village Shopping um sign program, master sign program. The proposed amendment would permit digital signage on electric vehicle chargers only and not on any of the built structures on site. The permitted uh digital signage on the charging units themselves would help facilitate and encourage the installation of electric vehicle chargers at the shopping center. Digital signage for the tenant spaces is not proposed under this amendment, nor is it currently pr- permitted. And then some things for the commission to consider that was voiced at the last hearing. Um, was possibly limiting the number of EV chargers with digital advertising on the subject site. Possibly also limiting the physical dimensions of the displays on the units themselves, requiring possible landscaping to mitigate aesthetic impacts and to regulate the operational hours of the um digital media displays. Um, staff has not received any correspondences in regard to the project proposal. Environment, the EIR for this was certified by the City Council via resolution 201151, as well as the addendum to the EIR approved on May 6th, 2013. An environmental impact report for the project was approved by the City Council in July 2012. Proposed um sign design review does not generate any new or substantially severe impacts than what were previously analyzed in that project EIR. And staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the project request subject to the findings and conditions of approval. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions and the um applicant is also in attendance today. Thank you.
Great. And Chris, just to clarify, the um, the applicant is just available for questions, no presentation?
Correct. I believe so.
Okay, great. Then why don't we first open it up, um, if any commissioners have questions um for either staff or the applicant? And after questions, we'll open it up for public comment and then turn it back. Um, great. Uh, Commissioner Donaldson.
Oh, sure. Um, yeah, Chris told me that there were a couple of these in Concord, so I went out to look at them and a photograph and maybe I'll report a little bit briefly of what I found, what I saw. Um, so I know, I found that the electronic screen is only on one side and the other side is paper. You can see that in the pictures that Chris has provided here. Um, the don't get left behind sign is a paper sign. They uh were cited to catch the attention of walkers coming from the Whole Foods food store, leaving the food store. And um, and seemed to succeed in doing that. Um, they were placed right where they could be seen. It looked to me like the graphics were changing about every 15 seconds or so. Um, and um, there was no sound system attached. These are not, uh, they're not like what you see at a gas station sometime where they're running an ad um, uh, that has speakers talking to you. There might have been a little low hum when the machines were, were charging, um, which was frequently. Um, they seem to be used for free charging. Uh, most of the time I was there. Um, one was empty when I got there and it was filled uh within minutes and the other one was full the whole time. Um, one was empty when I got there and it was filled uh, within minutes, and the other one was full the whole time. And um, there seemed to be a variety of ads, and they were on the smaller screen like the one you see on the left of. Of the of the of Chris's screen right now, and advertisements were a variety, um. Advertising almonds, advertising Whole Foods, advertising the United US Postal Service, um, ease. Um, National Geographic, uh, and a local nonprofit called Splash are what I saw. So that's just my observations from having seen the signs.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Pelch, do you have some questions?
Yes, so um, uh, and it's for uh, both maybe the staff and the applicant. Um, do these displays dim at night, do they take into account the ambient light level? And uh, does our uh, does the proposed uh, change in signage ordinance uh, require that, that's my first question.
I would, um, sure, I would defer to the representative from Volta itself, Neil, and I can allow him to speak now. Neil, feel free to speak on and answer the question.
That that would be a person, hi, this is Neil, uh, yes, your the screens do dim at night, similar to uh, what you could do with your cellphone. And also those pictures were of a version two um, station where one half of that station is static. Uh, version four is essentially a digital digital screen on both sides. So a great picture of an old station, uh, looks fantastic, uh, but one side will not actually be a static paper advertised.
Okay, good.
Yeah, thank, thank you, and while I've got the applicant here, another question for the applicant, um. Uh, there's only two installations proposed here, uh, why not more?
I don't know the answer to that, it's more of a sales question, um.
Okay.
We'd love to have more, but uh, so far.
Yeah, okay, you're from the the vendor, got it, um, and then the question to staff is, does our, does the, and I apologize for not looking for it previously. Uh, does the proposed change in the siding ordinance require the the dimming based on the ambient light?
Um, so this is actually part of the Master Sign Program for UC Village, um, and currently it doesn't have any built in provisions. Um, you know, related to to what you're interested in there with with the dimming and so forth, but um, I think that's something that the commission could ask of the applicant.
Okay, great, uh, that's it for my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moment?
Uh, hi, I have some que- uh, question about uh, button spot two, uh, you have shown uh, two chargers there. And on button spot one, you have shown one with display. I had that same question during the last meeting, but you were not there, so I thought I would take that opportunity and ask you. So how does it work um, with two chargers?
Uh, the two chargers currently designed presently at University Village are different level charging stations, one is a level two. Um, which is uh, AC at two oh eight, and the other is a DC fast charger, which is actually DC current at four eighty volts.
Okay, so um, just a hypothetical question, if we want to uh, provide chargers for this whole row. Which one would you uh, provide, the smaller one or the bigger one with display?
Well, both both charging stations, the DC fast and the level two are both a towers with screens. Um, there's the ability to also have essentially charging options that are that are non-screen, but Volta's. Uh, business plan factors in essentially advertisements paying for charging. Um, and so if you were to uh, do say five in a row, eight in a row, you'd have eight stations subsequently all right next to each other, which would be. A a visual overload, so if we were to increase the number of stations, uh, we would do so in a different fashion versus having. Uh, a screen tower, one after the other, after the other, after the other.
Right, okay, and then uh, last question, uh, what is the ratio between the PCS and the chargers?
So the PCS is a tower that converts AC into DC current. And that uh, BTC PCS is capable of holding two dispensers for two stations, we only have one DC fast charging station, so. It's half full, uh, in the event that we commissioned a second DC fast charging station at the site. We would need to install another PCS, we would simply put in the other half.
Hmm, so, and I mean, uh, and a hypothetical question, if we want like ten charges installed on the parking lot, how many PCS, PCSs will be there required?
Uh, for every DC fast charging tower, or charging station rather, you'd need, two of them would need one PCS. So if you were to actually have four, then you would divide by two, you would need two PCS towers.
Okay.
One installed.
Right, yeah, and that is only uh, like uh, you know, uh, model that is available, because this is like seven feet tall, four feet by four feet. You know, but bulky.
Currently, yes, we are investigating other um, manufacturers with different concepts. Uh, but none have gotten through our vetting process so far.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioner McLeod?
Oh, just a quick question for the the um, applicant or vendor. Uh, do the screens turn off at night after a certain time, and can you program them that way, or? Um, or is there any drawback to what you do to that, or? How do you deal with that in other places, do they turn off after like eleven PM and turn on at seven AM or six AM or something?
I actually don't know the answer to that question, um. I would imagine it can be programmed to turn off at a certain hour, uh, I know that usually after business hours, these stations are shut off from charging. So you could not roll in at one AM in the morning and charge your car. Um, the idea is that, you know, we want these stations to be uh, utilized during business hours to be advantageous towards the businesses that are located there. And so to run them twenty four seven in the middle of the night is not um, is not helpful for the the business patrons there. Um, I do not know for a fact whether or not stations turn off, I will look into that and respond back.
Okay, I I think that was my only question, but it was interesting to hear you talk about, if you did more, you wouldn't place them all in a row, I think that would be. Probably in advertising terms, not very effective, right, because the message would be diluted, or. So, do you know, but you don't know if there are plans to add more in the whole other areas of the parking lot?
Uh, I I do not know, I'm I'm with design and engineering and operations. So I'm not sure if there are any plans with sales to.
All right, fair enough.
Avenue.
Yeah. Uh, that's it for me, thank you.
Great, um, if that wraps questions, then why don't we go ahead and open it up for public comment? Um, for members of the public, now is your opportunity to speak on this item, I don't think we had any public speakers last time, or if we did, very few. Um, but if you would like to speak, now is your time, uh, please go ahead and get in the queue by raising your hand. To be staff, do we have any speakers, maybe one?
You have one speaker, um, David S R now, um, okay, we're gonna give you three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I just have a quick comment, which is what would be the plan if uh, there's graffiti? That gets applied.
Great question, um, all of the EV users who utilize our stations and our apps have the ability to either. Call in or utilize the app to phone in an issue, and graffiti and station damage are are some of those issues that can be flagged. And then at that point, it goes to a tech team that comes out and takes care of it.
Thank you.
Right, good.
We have one more uh, hand raised, Peter Campbell, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, I just have one question, uh, I'm, I wonder what kind of um. What what will be done about illegal parking, uh, non-electric vehicles parking in the space that's. Set aside for these charging stations, will that be prohibited, will there be any sanctions against people that do that? Or will it be just free for all parking in, and um, if anybody's parked there that's not charging, that would just effectively block the station, thank you.
Yeah, and that is an issue, um, and we understand that unfortunately, we can't dole out tickets, uh, we are not the police. Um, in this instance, a lot of EV charging or a lot of EV customers are usually pretty good at policing themselves and. And I'm I'm, I'll use the word shaming, but you know, the EV charging, EV users don't appreciate essentially getting their charging stations iced or. Um, unable to utilize them, in terms of how we can police it ourselves. Uh, there's, there's not much we can really do aside from commenting that it's an issue and and perhaps bringing it up to uh. Local entities and authorities, but um, we don't have the right to go in and start towing cars or anything of that nature.
Um, if I could jump in here, actually, the uh, those are two disabled parking spaces, so there will be parking there. Uh, of disabled folks that perhaps potentially do not have plug in cars, and that's the way state law is 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 written. That those spaces, the chargers have to be installed at disabled spaces first, uh, and other spaces as well, so um, in this case. Uh, well, I'll get to that in my comments, I'll I'll stop now.
Yeah, I mean, they are, the stalls are actually not ADA, um, they are accessible. Uh, but it's not considered an ADA stall itself, uh, that's why they're not going to be marked out in blue. Uh, and they won't have a blue wheelchair sign or a blue wheelchair um, painting on the parking space. So the accessibility rules are required by section eleven B in California code. But they are not actually only for um, ADA or handicapped vehicles.
Oh, good to know.
Okay, great, um, it looks like staff, and please confirm, no more public commenters? Okay, great, then with that, why don't we go ahead and close public comment, uh, and we can turn it back to commission for discussion on this item? Anyone like to? Start things out, sure, Commissioner Pelch, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, so I I would, I I think we need to add in the ordinance that any lighted sign needs to have um. Uh, controls such that it responds to ambient light and and darkens at night, otherwise you get this problem like you. Perhaps seen on the freeways that uh, where you have these horribly bright signs at night that don't do not have that capability, and it can be blinding. Um, so uh, you know, fortunately, the, you know, most technology is evolving that it does that, but I think that's. That I think that should be a requirement in the um, sorry, in the um, not not ordinance, but whatever it is, master sign agreement. Um, and uh, secondly, I would say that, you know, it's it's too bad that the just the vendors here and not uh, the um. Owner of the business or UC uh, to talk about this, but um, it's great that they're installing uh, EV charging. You know, the state has big mandates for EV uh, uh, for EV uh, sales in California. Uh, yet the charging is lagging, and as Commissioner Donaldson pointed out, in his observation, the stations are are used. And that is my, as a going on a fifth year plug in car user, that is my perception as well, is that you can rarely get to one because they're so popular. Uh, so I would have loved to have seen, um, as long as they have the conduit there, you know, five or six of these rather than just the two. Uh, but I, you know, I don't think we can, um, this is about the sign agreement, this isn't about the, an application for installing the chargers. So I don't think we have any say in the matter, I wish we had some leverage over that, but I don't think we do, so, um. But uh, if the staff does have communication with uh, the um. Property owner or the or the the business or and or UC, uh, I do wish that staff would uh, communicate the request. That uh, or encourage the installation of as many charges as possible, especially. And it was also pointed out that this one PCS unit can drive two um, DC fast chargers, then they could certainly put another DC fast charger there. Uh, you know, off the same PCS, those are my comments, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Donaldson?
Oh, yes, hi, um, yeah, thank you, Neil, for coming tonight to our meeting, and I appreciate that you be, you're here to address our questions. And I have to say that I'm glad I visited the signs that were in Concord to get a good feel with them. And I feel that my concerns that were expressed at our last meeting um, have been addressed, and I'm prepared to move the application, actually, so.
Okay, great, if there, yeah, if there aren't any other comments, why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
Uh, I will move approval of that planning application twenty one oh six two. Amendment to the UC Village Master Sign Program Amendment to allow the uh, the two um. Volta signs uh, with an additional condition that uh, that they be sensitive to ambient light, um, and that they dim at night. And that uh, um, and that they actually not run, that they they operate when the stars operate, mm-hmm. I think that would be fine.
I can, I can second that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and just quick check in with staff, are those conditions um, explicit enough for you, or do you need any more clarification?
I think that's good.
That's good, okay, great, just so we don't have to come back for clarification later, great, then, um, on that motion, then, Commissioner McLeod?
Uh, vote yes.
Commissioner Moment? Oh, Commissioner Moment, is that, sorry?
Yes.
Great, uh, Commissioner Pelch?
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, great, so that item passes five to zero with uh, the additional conditions provided, read by Commissioner Donaldson. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven dash two, this is planning application twenty one dash zero five eight, design review for a second story at nine nineteen Ramona Avenue. Um, and staff, uh, please go ahead with your presentation.
Yes, one moment, let's see. Great, once again, this is for a second story addition at nine one nine Ramona Avenue. Some background on the property, the subject property is a four thousand two hundred ninety square foot lot with a two bedroom, one bathroom, one thousand three hundred ninety square foot house built in nineteen twenty six. City records show minor work um, done to the property, um, some notable mentions are in addition to the garage in nineteen twenty seven, a room addition. Um, and then reconstruction of a new garage in nineteen eighty four. This is street view of the property as it sits today. Project requests, the applicant is seeking design review approval for a five hundred forty nine square foot second story addition to accommodate a new master suite for the home. The project scope also includes interior remodeling and reprogramming of the main level. Uh, additionally, two roof terraces are proposed on the second floor, along with one roof deck um, on top of the second story addition that's proposed. Altogether, this would result in a three bedroom, two bat, three bedroom, two bedroom, um, one thousand nine hundred thirty nine square foot home with a maximum height of twenty four feet five inches. Here's an existing elevation of the home. And here's the proposed elevation. And here are also some proposed renderings of the home. Exceptional design, projects which exceed a point four or five FAR subject to exceptional design as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exceptional design treatments for this project include integrated open spaces in the form of a new wood deck on the main level. Two roof terraces off the proposed second story addition, and one rooftop deck on top of the addition uh, roof. Um, double hung fix casement and awning wood windows with um, plaid exteriors are proposed, smooth stucco siding and hardy panel. Um, hardy paneling is proposed on the exterior of the home. A gable standing metal seam roof with shed dormers is proposed as the roof form. And landscaping improvements are proposed and include new drought tolerant plants and limestone coverings. Parking, there's an existing detached two car garage at the rear of the property, the applicant is proposing to convert the garage into an accessory dwelling unit. Two off street parking spaces are are proposed to be replaced in the driveway in a tandem configuration. And thus, no additional off street parking spaces are required under this. And thus, no additional off-street parking spaces are required under this project scope. With respect to the AD, the garage conversion into an ADU pursuant to Section 2020-080 of the Albany Municipal Code, the proposed conversion of the garage into an accessory dwelling unit is exempt from formal review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The ADU component of this project is subject to a building permit process only and will be approved by the Community Development Department directly. This information is only provided to provide overall context with the project. Staff has received three formal correspondences in regard to the project proposal voicing concerns with the rooftop deck and stair terraces and the potential privacy impacts that might arise and concerns with the side, proposed side yard fence and landscaping overall. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303. And recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review the proposed project, provide feedback to the applicant, and continue the matter to a date certain of October 13th, 2021 to allow for the proper story pole installation. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions and the applicant is also in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Why don't we go ahead and open it up for the project sponsor to give a presentation and then we'll open it for questions from commissioners once we've heard their presentation?
Sure. So Thomas Biggs, the project architect, you may speak whenever.
Okay, can you, can you hear me okay? Okay, well, the applicant wants to make a master bedroom suite above, as we mentioned earlier. We, I took into, previously, they had came, come to me with something that looked like it landed from another planet and I convinced them that we needed to be contextual. And so, you know, look around the neighborhood, you see a lot of, you see a lot of gable roofs. There are examples where we have upper story additions. In fact, but this, this addition that we're proposing, the upper, I wanted, just wanted to point out that the top of the wall where we start our gable roof is less than eight feet. We have a vaulted ceiling in most of the area. So we'd be, you know, the goal was to try to minimize and make this thing, you know, blend in. With regards to the upper roof deck, just want to cut to the chase, that seems to be an issue for some of the neighbors. You know, the, the upper roof deck is desired to be, the privacy impacts are desired to be mitigated. And there, and what we did was, we pulled, we created a low wall along the inside of the, as you can see in the top left corner, bottom right corner. We have a low wall of our, like a parapet that, that forms kind of a, when you're sitting down, people really can't see you. And ultimately, the goal for the clients is to get a peek of some, some sunset. And further mitigation could be done possibly by adding some additional landscaping, although I think the roof deck is kind of forward, where it sits, it's kind of forward of that rear yard, which I guess is actually something that goes further towards creating, mitigating the impacts to the privacy. I can't think of anything else I want to add. Well, I guess you could, you can also, I think one of the other things that we, I was able to help do from a historical preservation spec, perspective was convince the clients to retain the front entry porch. That really is honestly, for this house that is in, already, it's in kind of a, kind of a sad state, really is the only redeeming feature that really helps to reinforce the, this historic quality of this street, street edge. So as far as being a pattern of development, I think what we have here, albeit contemporary, we take, we're taking the forms that already pre-exist in the neighborhood and we're just kind of going off of that. So I think, I guess, other than that, I guess you could also say we have, also, we're planning on using dark sky compliant exterior sconce fixtures for any exterior lighting. So, you know, I don't think anybody raised any comments about the light pollution. And then I just want to add that, I just want to put some human quality to the, to my clients. The, this is a husband and wife. She is actually a kind of, she has some notoriety as an artist. She's a deaf Mongolian artist. And he is a, he's an interpreter as a living. So they kind of, she's, you know, they have the desire to have creative spaces for their personal needs. And then they have, I convinced them to add the ADUs so they can help the crisis for housing. Yeah, I, I think it's a great project. This improves what is really a kind of a house that needs some improvement. And so I, I guess, like, that's all I can say. We, we have, we, we have a spiral stair on the rear. It could be a ship's ladder if that's, I don't think, I think it's the very transparent stair. I, I mean, I guess, anyway, I, I'm not sure we had, I don't know, I'd be open to any comments at this point. Unfortunately, my apologies that we, we weren't able to get the story pulls up. So obviously, we can't really move past the, you know, we can't move forward, but I would, I mean, I'd like to hear the comments. And then thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. With that, why don't we go ahead and turn it back to the commission? Are there any questions for either staff or the project sponsor right now? Commissioner Donaldson?
Yeah, I have a question for the project sponsor, a couple of questions. It looks like the railings for the decks that access the various decks are solid and please verify that. And are they sort of code compliant? That is like 42 inches high? Is that your plan? That's one question I have. The other question I have is, is talk a little bit about the large circular window at the front on the second floor. A little bit about, you know, what you're thinking is about that and how it might fit into this design and and into, you know, into the neighborhood or not. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess, you know, symbolically, what is a circle? Really, it's a symbol, you know, a circle has sort of a metaphysical significance. I don't know if it's a cultural thing with my client being Mongolian, the circle in that culture. That's how I've kind of felt about it. You know, it's a picture window. It's a circle. You have a lot of windows on that street with picture windows. They, their shape is square. So you, you have a common, you do have a, but as far as choosing this, the shape, I think it comes from a fascination with this desire to frame the outside world through the shape of a, of a circle.
Okay, and railings?
The railings, if they're, they would have to be, we have to pull, we, we have this platform at the rear, which is more than 30 inches above grade. So it has to be, it has to be a legal guardrail. So it could be, I guess it, I've represented it as being sort of glass, but I think that's not even necessary. I think we probably can do wire as well. Isn't, that would be probably better, save them a little bit of money too.
Okay.
That would, that would not be visible from any, really any neighbor that would be right up against the fence. The six-foot wood fence that pre-exists that probably are going to replace.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yes, a question for the applicant. One letter is from the neighbor, I think to the left, if you're facing the house about putting the fence along her driveway and how she will be able to open her far doors. Is that something that you would consider not building or your clients would be considering not building to allow her better access to her vehicle there if she parks further along in her driveway or kind of a good neighbor gesture or, or what?
Yeah, I, I think that, 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 that I encourage my client, in fact, I do this with all my clients, is to just be a good neighbor. And so I think that my client would definitely, if that is an issue, that we could definitely not do a fence there. You know, a lot of these driveways in East Bay and throughout the area are shared. They started as shared driveways. And so the property line kind of, in a lot of cases, runs right through the driveway. But yeah, in this case, I don't see, I don't see, I don't think that's going to be an issue of, of working with the neighbor to do, like I said, I haven't heard any of that comment.
But, well, yeah, I would just encourage you to work that out with the neighbor. You know, sounds like she has young kids from what I read and, you know, just make her life a lot easier and doesn't seem like it would hurt you at all to not have a fence there for a while, you know?
Yeah, let's forego the fence. Yes.
All right, that's it. Just my only question.
Commissioner Pilch?
Ah, yes, oops, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, you mentioned the porch, retaining the porch. I think that is good. I think you may, you wish to maintain the entire front facade, not, I mean, and I'm going to get the terminology wrong because I'm not an architect, but it looks like the, the pointed pointed feature over the porch and the pointed feature over the frontmost picture window are intended to be, are intended to remain, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a good thing, but it looks like in your computer generated views that you were just showing, I think you just, you get the impression that those are gone, but I think that's just a, an artifact of the computer generation, was the one plane melting into the other. So.
Yeah, that's, yes, sir, that is correct. I, next time, I'll overlay line, black line work on the, on the edges to, to delineate the, the planes better so that you don't have that. I think on the, on the front elevation over on sheet A4, you can see the, the profile of that retained kind of historic, you know, it's not a historic landmark, but I find it to have character.
Yeah, I, I do too. So yeah, I noted also that some of the, on some of the drawings, you, you see the profile and on some you don't. And I figured I'd just check to make sure that was a, an artifact of the computer generated view, which it is. Great. And so the second question is the, the dormers tilt back, you know, they have a, they tilt back towards the center of the roof rather than being, you know, horizontal, completely horizontal. Can you tell me the reason for that?
Um, well, the, the, the views, it, it just kind of looked like wings of a, of a bird kind of, but we could actually tilt them if it's, I think, maybe we look at going the other way and just doing a slight, we were trying to get a, it was sort of that, that's sort of like the, the association my client had, but the, I was, I was trying to, the, the size window they wanted, really, you're going to be standing in this floor level looking up and you're going, you're really only going to see the sky. It's not to view, you're really going to see the tops of trees. So it was the desire to, to kind of make the window a little bit taller to be able to see the sky in that way and from both sides. So it's really for this, the experience from within is the driving factor for that.
Okay, guys, that's, thanks. That helps a lot. That, that's it for my questions.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes, I have a question for staff. In the, in the staff report, the table noted, that notes that the proposed lot coverage would be 42%. And I'm wondering if that includes the ADU or not. Again, we're at this somewhat difficult situation we've had before where I'm confused about what's, what's included and whatnot. Would the actual lot coverage be a lot greater if you, when you add in the ADU? And if so, I'm wondering if that should be, could be a concern for us, just having enough usable open space. So that's my question.
In this case, the, the garage that's proposed to be converted is existing, so that existing footprint would be considered an existing condition. And so that would be the baseline lot coverage.
All right, I think that's good. Okay.
Great. I, I also had just a couple of questions for the sponsor. Three quick ones. One, just wanted to confirm, looking at the plans and the window detail, it doesn't look like there's a two-inch reveal proposed, but I wanted to clarify because I know that is a condition of approval. So just hoping you can talk through whether that is indeed the intention?
Yes, that is the intention.
And that's from the siding, not from trim that's applied on the exterior of the siding, but from the face of the siding itself, it's inbound two inches?
Yeah, it will be inbound two inches and we're going to do, we're going to, the window type, I think I want to update that detail to be, to better show as, as stucco. But I think what we're probably going to do is to not have a, not have necessarily have a trim, but basically make it recessed so that the face of the window is two inches back from the face of the stucco.
Okay. Great. And even, even where there's hardy panel, you'll have that same treatment?
Yeah, I'll have some addition, I'll have more details to show that, yes, it will be two inches wherever, anywhere.
Okay, great. And that's still, you're still moving forward with entirely aluminum clad for both replacement windows on the existing building as well as for the vertical addition?
Yes.
Okay, great. Second question I had for you is I didn't see a landscape plan in there. I saw some general landscaping sort of shown on the site plan, but not a, a specific landscape plan. Did I miss that or do you guys have one as part of your packet?
Um, I did, I, I, let's see, on the landscape. I, no, I did not clarify the landscaping. And so I, I can come back with that.
Perfect. Yeah, if you could just come back, I think especially for these projects with exceptional design, we do want to see a proper landscaping plan with, with plants called out and all of that. So that'd be great for you to come back and then.
I wanted to point, I wanted to point out the landscaping we're sort of thinking of is represented on the watercolor rendering on sheet A1.
Okay.
Front natural, you know, basically natural, naturally drought tolerant and low water use plants from the Bay Area gardening recommended plant list.
Okay, great. We're, we're down on a landscape architect on the commission, but I think our, our general advice is to make it an intentionally planted space, not just a selection of Home Depot's finest. So we can, we can turn back to that during some of the commission commentary, but I just wanted to double check on that question. And then the third question I had for you is, it looks like on the hardy panel siding that you have called out, you called out as textured hardy panel. The renderings kind of indicate a smooth application of hardy paneling. And I was just wondering, hoping you can clarify which, which is accurate, sort of the, the call out of it being textured or it's sort of the depiction in the renderings?
I think, well, we, I, I believe it's smooth, smooth finish.
Okay, that kind of, to me, makes more sense for the design intent here, but I think on the A4, the turquoise at least, wall color is called out as, as textured. So just an item for you to flag when you come back.
Yes, okay, I'm gonna change that.
Great. Okay, those were all of my comments. Any other comments from the sponsor before we open it up for public comment and then we can come back for discussion? Great. All right, seeing none, staff, why don't we go ahead now and open up public comment to members of the public? Now is your opportunity to speak on this item. Again, we are going to end up continuing this item since we didn't get story pulls up. So just please know that as part of your public commentary. I think we would all appreciate for this public comment. Please share suggestions for changes. Now is a good time to give that feedback. Suggestions for changes, now is a good time to give that feedback to the project sponsor. So again, now is your time to get in the queue, if you would like to give your three minutes of public testimony, please go ahead and raise your. Raise your hand now, and with that, staff, we'll turn it over to you.
We do have one hand raised, David Asser now, we're gonna give you three minutes.
Hello, and you can hear me again? Okay, so we understand that the story polls have not been up, so that's, will be anxious to see how that looks when they do go up. You know, receiving the postcard from the, about the planning meeting was the first we really heard of these plans at all. And tonight is the first I've heard that. They're, they want to consider replacing the fence, and again, we're the neighbors on the south side. Directly adjacent to it. So I do encourage the sponsor and the owners to, you know, improve the communication with the neighbors. We do have the concern about privacy, especially considering that rooftop deck. You know, since there are two other decks that are slightly lower, it seems, I, I wonder. The motivation or the necessity for another higher deck. I understand that's a personal choice, but it is something that does concern us regarding privacy.
I want to add, this is Mary Taylor Asarno, I wanted to add to that the concern about how close the stairs in the back on the south side are to the property line. I understand that they. I, I believe they are in compliance, but they're awfully close to the property line. You know, there's not, in Albany, we have small houses and large houses going next to us, and they do impact us. Even though we don't have much control over it, they impact the amount of light that come into our house and our privacy, and. It's really important when neighbors take on these projects to be considerate and mindful that. It's going to have a very large impact on our family and our, and, you know, our space.
More question is that when construction does occur, if it, if it does. Will there be a requirement to install netting or some kind of screen? For example, along the property line to make sure any materials don't fall over the fence or over. You know, to, to keep any safety concerns like that. Okay, I think that's it.
There's another hand raised here, Tree Galb Stuber, you will have three minutes.
Okay, hi, I submitted a letter that you might have seen, maybe not. Besides some of the things that the Asarnos talked about, the roof deck and the terracing. A, a big concern of mine is that the, they had pictured and, and labeled switchgrass and. Wand panic grass along the perimeter of the front yard, which is. Just, this could be hazard of people walking on the sidewalk. These plants grow to five point seven feet from what I looked up and the. They had weeds which grew over five feet this summer, and the fire department got involved. Back in July, and, and, you know, they were, they were sent a letter, so I'm afraid that these. Choices that they've made are inappropriate and might go the same way that what they had. Going in their front yard for years, it's, it's a safety factor, fire department. I'm sure would, would not, would not want this to happen again, and. Administration Department and the city attorney had to get involved, and then finally, after that happened, they finally. Took those weeds down. There, there are plenty of drought tolerant plants that are low height, low maintenance. And that would be so much better for people walking by. I don't know if any of you have dogs, but those fox tails, you can. You know, it's a fortune going to a vet trying to get the fox tails out of their. Out of their, the little critters, and I avoided going in front of their house because of those weeds. And, and, you know, danger, you know, fire is, is rampant in the state of California, so that is not something that we want. To happen in this plan. Thank you.
Alright, any other members of the public, now is the last call, if you'd like to speak on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand. Alright, go in once, go in twice with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and turn it back to the commission for. Discussion, again, this won't be an action item tonight, but at this point, let's give some initial feedback and or suggestions to the project applicant. Would anyone like to start? If not, I'm happy to jump in, I just have a couple of quick comments. To kick things off here, generally speaking, supportive of the design, I think looking at the massing in general, this seems very appropriate in terms of a vertical addition and. Sort of modernizing the house for the applicant's needs. I would say, I think there's some sort of relatively easy modifications that could be made that seem to be good neighborly gestures as well. While still achieving the property owner's project objectives. One of the items that I would suggest, because I do, it does sound like the uppermost deck is one of the main points of contention, and we. You know, don't often see roof deck roof decks, we often will see sort of an upper level deck or a deck over a lower level. But because it is a little more unusual, what I would suggest doing is sort of twofold, one, I think it could be helpful for the architect to provide some sightlines. From this, some additional cross sections that kind of can show from an average height person's eye level. What the sightlines would be into both adjacent side neighbors and to the rear neighbors, just to give. Members of the public and commissioners for that matter, a little better sense of what the, the pragmatic sightline type privacy concerns would be. I think there are also some opportunities where maybe you build the, the solid roof deck railings, they're a little bit taller. Than maybe what's required by code, I think it's a forty two inch minimum guard rail height that would be required, but maybe you increase that by a foot, so again, you basically. Decrease those sightlines and limit the amount of visibility into neighbors. I think if there appear to be sort of some ongoing privacy concerns from that upper deck, it's at risk of being. Maybe amended out of the project, so I think it probably behooves the applicant. To beef up their case for how that roof deck can be designed in such a way that it doesn't create adverse impacts on adjacent neighbors. Privacy, so that would be an initial, an, an initial suggestion that I have. The second is on the landscaping plan, I think it, and we say this on a lot of these projects, I think it's advisable to consult a landscape architect. On this, to put together a proper landscape plan, I think especially if there have been maintenance issues in the past. I think with that spirit in mind, some of us are more avid, avid gardeners than others, and I think if this has been an issue in the past, it's probably worthwhile. Consulting a landscape architect to design sort of a low maintenance drought tolerant. Landscaping design that takes into some of the considerations that the, the neighbor brought up to make sure, you know, the sidewalk. Things don't get overgrown and impeding the right of way on the sidewalk. Again, to me, that seems like somewhat low, low hanging fruit here. And then lastly, my third comment would be along that stair, I actually think the neighbor made a really good suggestion about. Or expressing a, a very valid point about privacy impacts of walking up those stairs, you know, right on their property line, and I think that too is a place where. Some tall shrubbery or landscaping of some sort could be integrated into that fairly wide staircase there. To help minimize sort of that immediate sightline of folks walking up and, and looking into the neighbor's backyard, again, to me. Seems like a, an easy win-win there to, to propose something that thinks about privacy first as part of that design. Those are my three primary suggestions, the, the initial circular window on the vertical addition is something that caught my eye. In terms of it not being terribly contextual with surrounding architecture. On the flip side, you know, I think on this project, which is a little bit different than some of the other, we've seen some of these proposals before with various like porthole type designs. Where it's felt a little tacked on. This is still, I think, so long as we can be. It's demonstrated to us that this is a high quality window, that there's a two inch reveal, and so it clearly has those shadow lines. It is on the vertical addition that's set back. I feel like with those things, it's a little more separated and differentiated from, from the lower level, and it, and it, I don't think is quite as. As jarring as some, as some of the other ones, but I, I will just put it out there, that was sort of an architectural feature that at first. Felt a little out of place, given the architecture of the rest of the building as well as the, the surrounding context in the neighborhood. I don't feel to such a degree that it would be a deal breaker for me, but just wanted to, to flag that initial comment, so that, those are my, my. Comments on this project. With that, Commissioner Donaldson?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, Elizabeth, thank you, I want to echo all of your comments, I, I really agree with all of them, and I think they're very well stated. One of the things I did is I pulled out our design review guidelines, and I know, I found that we do have a specific policy on roof decks. On page fourteen, it's been an issue in the past, and we need to be real careful with those, with roof decks. And so I would, I, I'm not, I think I'll take time to read, read the policy right now, but I think that. The applicant should pay close attention to it, and I would urge other commissioners to refresh their memories about it when that project comes back to us. Generally, I found the, the, the overall architectural concept somewhat daring. And, and, and not, not distasteful to me necessarily, but something I really need to think about and study. I'm eager to see the, the story polls go up, because I think that will be very revealing. And my feeling about the large circular window is, is essentially. The same as what Commissioner Wadi said, so it did really jump out at me, and I had to think about it for a while, but I think I could be okay with it. Okay, I think those are my comments right now.
Thank you, Commissioner McClellan?
I, yeah, you know, I agree with a lot of that. I'm not too worried about the second or the upper story roof deck too much. You know, I just see it as a place for people just to be sitting, enjoying their coffee or a drink or something. And I think in, in actuality, those spaces are not used that much, you know, maybe they start out with the intention of using them and. You know, you use it more in the first year and a little less in the second year, and by year ten, nobody's going up there anymore, and the Albany climate is not all that inducing. Towards sitting outside like that. I mean, granted, there is plenty of other deck space on the property, but. You know, it may be used a lot less, I, I agree with the idea of some tall plantings along the stair in the back, the deck area. The kind of butterfly roofs, I, I'm kind of coming around to it, they might want to meet the ridge in. More direct fashion than sticking down a tiny bit. You know, they could slope down a little bit, but I, I get the idea of, when I try to do this all the time too, is you raise a roof up to open up the window to the sky as much as possible. So you're basically looking up, I think that's fine, I, I think it's a nice feature. I like the materials and I like the back part of the house, I think it's kind of a creative, interesting design, I like the hardy panels. And the round window, you know, looked, it's sort of, it jumps out at you at first, but then I. You know, kind of come, I've come around a little bit, and I think it might be a really interesting window from the inside. As well, and it's centrally located, it kind of makes a symmetrical design, more or less for that upper part. And, you know, there's no law against round windows, so go for it, is my opinion. Not everybody has to have a square rectangular window. So generally, I support the project, I would really urge you to work with the neighbor and not put up the fence on the south side, I think it is. You know, it looks like it would be a fun, creative project overall, and a tremendous improvement to the house, and, you know, kind of. Give it a new life for the next hundred years, so. I'm fine with this project.
Thank you, Commissioner, who was next, Commissioner Polch?
Yes, thank you, yeah, in, in pretty much agreement with ninety five percent of what's been said so far. My, my biggest concern was that fence, if, you know, if that can mitigate, that can help the neighbor. With the issues of opening the car door, I think that would be a very good neighborly thing to do, alter that. That's my biggest concern, otherwise I don't really have many concerns. I, I personally, I don't, my biggest architectural concern is the, is the wing windows. I don't see why they couldn't be lower just a bit and there'd be a horizontal plane across rather than, rather than the wing up shape. But I think I, it seems like I might be the only one with that. With that opinion, so I'm not gonna fall on my sword about that. And, yeah, as far as the, the top roof deck, privacy. Might be a great idea, you know, I think Commissioner Donald, sorry, Commissioner McClellan is probably right, that it probably won't get that much used. That said, you know, the, probably the best thing to do would be to have the. Have solid railings up there such that when you're seated, you cannot look into the adjacent properties, but you can still look out and, and, and see. So whatever height that would be, while, you know, while you're, while you're in a seated position. Otherwise, if, you know, I don't have a problem with the, with the multiple decks, if that's what the applicant wants to do. And agreed about the land, hiring the landscaping architect, doing the landscaping right. And. I, I think I can second, again, second all the other comments that were made by the commission previously. Yep, that's about it, thank you.
Great, Commissioner Donaldson?
Oh, yes, quickly, I don't know if anyone else noticed, but doing the fieldwork for the item that was on our consent calendar, I think eleven hundred key route. I noticed the round window in the building next door, a tall window, and just after I've been to this site, so. Anyway, there is precedent for them, and, and it, it really looked quite attractive in that situation, so, okay, that's all.
Commissioner McClellan?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to one, the neighbor's comment about putting up netting or screening, nothing's required per se by the building department or. Building code, but. The applicants could put up netting on scaffolding that they put up, they could build some sort of temporary. Barrier out of cloth and some temporary posts or something, but. You know, it's also incumbent on their contractor to not, you know, make a mess in your yard and to keep your yard clean and free of debris. So, you know, that's, hopefully they're hiring a good contractor for that, but, you know, that's, it's sort of based on negotiation, you could. You know, the applicant could just agree to put up netting on the scaffolding, and that would be a good screen for a good portion of the job.
Thanks, Commissioner Moaman?
Yeah, I concur with most of the comments my fellow commissioners have offered, I just have a couple of comments on the hardy panels. I think hardy panel material change without a plain change sometimes look strange. If a plain change for the hardy panel is not possible, I think a strong reveal would be helpful. And, you know. Hardy panels floating above the ground also strange without a plain change, so it would be advisable to. Bring them down so that they look kind of grounded. And also the panel sizes, they look too big for a residential project. It would be good if they can be smaller, more horizontal maybe, so they would look more like siding and more residential. And also, the joint line should also. Coordinate, should be coordinated with windows. So that looks more composed than just superficial.
Great, Commissioner Polch?
Yeah, sorry, so the word hardy was used, I, I have, I have just one nerdy comment that I think hardy is going the way of Kleenex and Vaseline. I believe it's a brand name, but it's becoming generic, so I, I prefer. If, if it's actually going to be used that brand, I prefer that we actually use that brand name and or call it cement siding or cement fiber siding. But I'm probably the only one with that opinion, so I just needed to throw that in there, thank you.
I agree with you.
Alright, if that wraps comments, I do think we need to take a motion here to continue it, and maybe before we do so, staff, is there a. Date certain that you'd recommend us continuing this out to?
Yeah, the next available meeting date is October thirteenth. That gives the applicant, I think, three weeks actually from today to to get any revisions in and gives us time to prepare a staff report.
Okay, great. Then do we have, would somebody like to make a motion then to continue this item out until October thirteenth?
Certainly, I'll move to continue a planning application twenty one oh five oh five eight at nine nineteen Ramona to date certain of October thirteenth.
Great. Do we have a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Commissioner Pilch. And then on that motion, Commissioner McLeod?
I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Moment?
Yes.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that continuance passes five to zero to October thirteenth. Make sure you guys get your story polls up on time. And with that, that moves us on to the rest of our agenda here, new business of which there is none confirming with staff none. And then next meeting, we've got September twenty ninth. Is that accurate still, staff? September twenty ninth hearing.
Pocket link from us.
Great. Then next next meeting, September twenty ninth, same time, seven P M. Start time. Oh, which, sorry, what was that?
It's a five P M.
It is a five P M. Okay, good thing I asked. So five P M. Start time on the twenty ninth. So special hearing time for members of the public. And with that, that adjourns our hearing for this evening. So thank you, everyone, for the long and productive multiple agendas tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.